Good evening. I would like to call to order the regular meeting of the Newport News School Board for Tuesday, March 19th, 2024. On behalf of the members of the School Board and Dr. Mitchell, I welcome each of you present this evening and those who are watching on TV and online. A quorum is present to transact the business of the school division. We will begin tonight's meeting with the invocation and pledge to the flag. Here to do the honors are two students from Palmer Elementary School, Callie Brinkley and Lucas Marquez Salgado. First, Callie will come forward and deliver the invocation. He will be followed by Lucas, who will come forward and deliver the pledge. So, Callie, will you please come forward and tell us a little bit about yourself? And it's just she. Go ahead.
Um, some things about myself is I love pink.
I do, too.
I love dogs.
Do you, too?
My favorite meal is probably fries. My favorite subject is math and science. And I love to be kind to others.
Thank you. Ready to do the invocation? Go ahead.
This is a piece from Change Sings by Amanda Gorman. "I'm bright as the light each day brings. There is love when my chains sing. I show others tolerance, though it might take some courage. I don't build a taller fence but fight to build a better bridge. I talk not only of distances, from where and how we came, I also walk our differences to show we are the same. I'm a movement that roars and springs. There's a wave where my chains sing. Chains sing where? There in the me because I'm the chains I want to see. As I grow, it grows like seeds. I'm just what the world needs. I'm a voice where freedom rings. You're the love your bright heart brings. We are the waves starting to spring, for we are change. We sing. We're what the world is becoming, and we know it won't be long. We all hear change drumming. Won't you sing along?"
Thank you, Callie. Lucas, will you please come forward and tell us a little bit about yourself before you give us or lead us through the pledge?
A little bit of stuff about myself is my favorite food is pasta. My favorite color is blue. I love the dogs. That's pretty much all.
Great. Thank you. Would you like for us to stand?
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Lucas. We want to thank both of you for joining us at tonight's meeting. It means a lot to have you come and read for us and lead us through the pledge. Do you have some family or school family with you today? Okay, would you guys stand? Thank you for supporting them and bringing them to tonight's meeting. The next item on tonight's agenda is School Board recognition. So, Dr. Mitchell, will you please join me at the podium?
Good evening. I have the honor and privilege of recognizing some outstanding student athletes this evening. And it's going to be sort of hard to follow both Kaylee and Lucas. She did a fantastic job. Our first honorees this evening earned back-to-back state championships. On March 9th, the Woodside High School Boys Basketball Team earned the 2024 Virginia High School League Class V State Championship with the 53-33 victory over Elsie Bird High School at the Virginia Commonwealth University Siegel Center in Richmond. Tonight, we're honored to recognize these talented athletes. Please join me congratulating them as we call each team member's name. Silas Barksdale, would you please come forward? And rounding out the team, Messiah Wells Stevens. We also want to recognize the coaches. Head Coach Stephon Welsh, but I understand he might not be able to join us because his son's playing tonight, right? Congratulations to him. And our assistant coaches, Nishan Chandler. Assistant Coach Jeff Hall. And Assistant Coach Tay Langford. And Assistant Coach Marlon Montague. We also have a, the School Board and Superintendent have prepared a special resolution for these student athletes, and I'd like to read it in part. Yes, well, ask the principal to come forward and accept the resolution. Dr. Mary Hardisty. The resolution reads in part, "Resolution of Recognition Honoring Woodside High School Boys Basketball Team as the Virginia High School League Class V State Champions. Whereas the Woodside High School Boys Basketball Team earned the 2024 Virginia High School Class V State Championship with the 53-33 victory over Elsie Bird High School's team on March 9th, 2024, at the Virginia Commonwealth University Siegel Center in Richmond, Virginia. And whereas with this victory, the Woodside Wolverines earned back-to-back state championships in 2023 and 2024, a feat that was repeated after almost two decades when the Wolverines earned back-to-back state basketball titles in 2004 and 2005. And whereas, the Boys Basketball Team finished their season with an outstanding record of 27 wins and one loss. And whereas, this team you see in front of you captured the state title. And whereas, the athletic talent displayed by this team is due in part to the efforts of Head Coach Stephon Welsh, who was the first former basketball player from Hampton Roads to win back-to-back state titles as both a player and a coach. And assistant coaches, Nishan Chandler, James Dix, Jeff Hall, Tay Langford, and Marlon Montague, the support of the team's family and friends, and a host of other fans and supporters. And whereas, the hallmarks of the Wolverines, from the opening game of the season to participation in the championship, were a testament to athletic ability, good sportsmanship, honor, and scholarship, demonstrating that the team is determined and focused. And now, though, for it be resolved that the Newport News School Board congratulates the Woodside High School Boys Basketball Team on their second consecutive state championship and outstanding team record, bringing honor and pride to Newport News Public Schools and the city of Newport News. And the resolution is, of course, signed by every member of the School Board and the Superintendent. Congratulations. I also want to take a moment to congratulate Silas Barksdale. In honor of his outstanding season, he was named the Peninsula District Boys Basketball Player of the Year. He averaged 18 points, 14 rebounds, five blocks, and six assists in the regular season. In addition, Michael Jenkins was named to the first team. And Jermaine Dietrich and Travis Hamilton were named to the second team, and Messiah Stevens earned an honorable mention. Gentlemen, again, congratulations on a great season. Let's give them one more round of applause. Okay, I'd like for you to gather. We're going to try to take a picture in the front here.
Can we take a quick picture?
We can do that. You want to take it up? Okay, all right. We will do that then. This evening, we also have the honor and privilege of recognizing another outstanding student athlete who has achieved great success. Last school year, the Virginia High School League voted to sanction girls wrestling as an emerging sport. Our next honoree, Jordan Anderson, has excelled and earned a state championship in her weight class. Ms. Anderson, During the state wrestling championships on February 24th, Ms. Jordan, a senior at Woodside High School, won the state title in her weight class. She's also receiving a resolution of recognition from the School Board, which reads in summary, "Resolution Honoring Jordan Anderson of Woodside High School as a Virginia High School League State Wrestling Champion." Whereas, Jordan Anderson earned the 2024 Virginia High School League Class V 126-pound Girls State Wrestling Championship in February, on February 24th. And whereas, with this victory, Jordan Anderson distinguished herself as an elite wrestler and one of the top wrestlers in the state. And whereas, Jordan finished the wrestling season with an outstanding record of 22-2. And whereas, Jordan Anderson is the first wrestler in Woodside School, Woodside High School's history to capture a state title. And whereas, the athletic talent displayed by Jordan Anderson, from the opening match of the season to the state championships, is a testament to her dedication, good sportsmanship, honor, and scholarship. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Newport News School Board congratulates Jordan Anderson on her state championship title and her outstanding record, bringing honor and pride to Newport News Public Schools and the city of Newport News. And again, it is signed by all members of the Board and the Superintendent. I also like to note that Ms. Anderson is a USA Wrestling All-American and is the 20th best 126-pound wrestler in the nation. And I understand she's preparing for world qualifiers to be held in April. Congratulations. Tonight's state championship recognitions are just the beginning. In the coming weeks, we know there'll be other celebratory events to commemorate these talented student athletes. We do want to take a moment, though, to acknowledge their family members that are present this evening. Would you stand to be recognized? Their family members of our, thank you very much. Thank you for joining us. I'd also like to thank the Woodside Principal, Dr. Mary Hardisty, for joining us, and Assistant Principal Michael Bellamy. Thank you. The Woodside Athletic Director, Coach Paul Backlin in the back there. And our Director of Athletics, Lee Martin. Thank you for your presence and support this evening. Again, congratulations to all of tonight's honorees. We'll take a short break, and during this time, our viewing audience will have opportunity to view this month's School Board Spotlight. And during that time, we're going to take the team picture as well. So, we'll stand in recess for about
Get ready to fuel your future with science. Introducing SciPAC. Starting the week of March 25th, 5th and 8th graders in Newport News Public Schools are invited on a science and engineering adventure, and the journey starts at home. Build, experiment, and tackle challenges head-on. From constructing circuits to designing catapults or conducting scientific investigations, this is not homework. It's a step towards a future as limitless as your own creative potential. SciPACs are imaginative, engaging, inventive, and best of all, absolutely free. Newport News Public Schools brings the journey of discovery home through SciPAC, delivering an educational experience for the whole family.
Students from Heritage High School are helping Newsom Park Elementary students make the grade. As part of their community service outreach, cadets in Heritage's Navy Junior Reserve Officer Training Corps visit Newsom Park each month to tutor select students. NJROTC cadets work with 3rd grade students to reinforce classroom instruction in reading and literacy as they prepare for their first year of SOL testing. Along with helping students towards academic success, the Heritage Cadets hope to encourage the young navigators to become mentors themselves when they reach high school. The academic partnership began in November, and students are already showing improvements in the classroom. Cadets take turns volunteering each visit to give them all an opportunity to grow as productive citizens and acquire valuable volunteer hours to earn the Community Service Ribbon Award. And for cadets that are also enrolled in Heritage's University Magnet Program, these service hours help them fulfill their necessary graduation requirements. By partnering together, students at Newsom Park and Heritage are building valuable relationships and gaining skills that will last a lifetime. Love is in the air at Rich Neck Elementary, but it's also covering the doors with hearts decorating every classroom entryway. This February, the Rich Neck family was invited to cover our doors with love. Early in the month, every raccoon was sent home with a paper heart. Students were encouraged to decorate the hearts and write kind messages to their teachers, friends, or any staff member. Parents also participated by writing messages of support to their students' teachers, thanking them for all their heart work and dedication. Teachers wrote many inspiring and encouraging messages to their students, and staff members also encouraged one another by placing hearts on their coworkers' doors to lift them up and boost school morale. As the hearts poured in, classes decorated their doors, with some even placing hearts on their desks as a reminder of how much they are cared for and loved by their teachers and friends. Cover our doors with love was a simple activity to complete, but small gestures can leave meaningful lasting memories. Together, the Rich Neck family made kindness and love a priority which will long be remembered. Student teams from across Newport News Public Schools competed in an elementary engineering design challenge to build a working lighthouse. Organized by the Instructional STEM Team, each elementary school selected four-person teams from 4th and 5th grades to participate at Newsom Park Elementary, home of the Science, Technology, and Math Magnet Program. After receiving the criteria and goals for the Sea of Light themed challenge, the student teams split up their workload. Two students worked as civil engineers to construct a lighthouse with specific height requirements. Meanwhile, the other two members learned about electrical engineering to properly construct a battery-powered light to assemble inside their school's lighthouse. Since the U.S. Coast Guard maintains certain lighthouses, they were the community partner for this specific challenge. At any point during the challenge, students could ask for help from the U.S. Coast Guard members in attendance. There were also high school students from Heritage's Governor's STEM Academy who assisted the young engineers as they safely constructed their lighthouses. At the end of the allotted time, the team's creations were judged and scored. General Stanford earned 3rd place, Yates came in 2nd, and Rich Neck shone brightly as the top winner among all Newport News elementary schools. Discovery STEM Academy hosted an evening event to make healthy choices fun for the whole family. While celebrating National Family Engagement Month and American Education Week, over 100 students and their families attended Family Fitness Night. As families moved throughout the school, they were invited to participate in a dozen activity stations hosted by educators and community partners. Each station promoted movement while reinforcing academic concepts, many of which can be replicated at home for families to grow and learn together. Families combined ingredients to create their own healthy trail mix, played games with an athletic twist, and completed math problems to see how many exercises they needed to complete. A family fitness passport helped students keep track of their progress, and the completed sheet could be turned in to receive some fun prizes. Thanks to Family Fitness Night, families are learning the value of making healthy choices. During the month of February, your favorite neighborhood historian brings you valuable and interesting facts about local Black history. For the past few years, Shonda Tab, a 7th grade social studies teacher at Washington Middle School, has produced informative video shorts about some of the influential people, historical landmarks, and Black history events that happened right here in Hampton Roads. Each week, she produces multiple videos, sometimes traveling beyond the walls of Washington Middle School, to share a wealth of cultural and historical knowledge. This year, her videos have focused primarily on the school's namesake, Booker T. Washington, and his impact on our community and the nation. Washington students help her with many of the videos, either working behind the scenes recording and editing, or storing in the videos that are shared on social media. By getting students involved, Shonda Tab makes history exciting and relevant for her scholars. And by sharing these videos for all to enjoy, our favorite neighborhood historian helps us realize that Black history is American history. In addition to ensuring a safe ride for all students, Newport News Public Schools Transportation Department aims to create a cleaner, healthier, and more cost-effective ride for students and staff. NNPS was awarded $525,000 through the Environmental Protection Agency's ongoing Clean School Bus Grant. This money will be used to continue upgrading the bus fleet by replacing 15 older diesel buses with new propane school buses. 153 propane buses already drive students to and from school daily in Newport News. With these additional buses, propane-fueled school buses will represent over 50% of the 318 buses in Newport News. Compared to diesel, propane is a cleaner burning fuel, reducing harmful pollution and greenhouse gas emissions. In addition to the environmental benefits, there are many advantages for our students. The reduced emissions mean healthier air for students and staff to breathe while on and around buses. While the quieter ride helps students arrive at school calmer and ready to learn. Studies show that schools experience improved student attendance and academic achievement thanks to a more comfortable bus ride. The reduced noise of the propane-powered engines also benefits bus drivers, who are more aware of important situations both in sight and outside the bus. Propane-fueled buses are also cost-effective through reduced fuel prices and less maintenance. By embracing alternative fuel options for our school buses, Newport News Public Schools continues to make forward-thinking changes to benefit our students, staff, and community.
I hope you enjoyed this month's School Board Spotlight. During our regular meetings, we provide time for the public to address the School Board. These opportunities are scheduled in the early part of our agenda and towards the end of the meeting. As advertised, citizens may submit comments via email up to 30 minutes prior to our meeting time to be included in the official meeting record. For those of you joining us in person, the Board considers this an opportunity to listen to your comments. Please understand that we will consider your concerns. We ask that you comply with our three-minute time limit. As you begin your comments, a green light will come on, a yellow light signals that you have 30 seconds remaining, and a red light and a beep indicates your time is up. And this evening, we do have a pretty hefty stack of cards. We will go for 30 minutes, and then we will pick up with our agenda, and then we will complete the cards near the end of our meeting. So, as your name is called, please come forward. First card I have is Reverend Natalie Chamberlain.
Good evening. I'm pleased to be able to address you again this evening. I'm Reverend Natalie Chamberlain, pastor of Hilton Christian Church, a congregation who welcomes and embraces people of all genders and gender identities. I'm a citizen and a resident of Newport News. I've been addressing this Board as pastor, but I have not asked you to adhere to my faith perspective since this is a secular body or should be. There are truths in Scripture that are more universal than any faith tradition, and tonight, I would like to share one of those with you. I recently heard someone say that they would rather their child died than be trans. I did not hear it here, but the negating of a trans child's identity is akin to such thinking. I offer to you wisdom as articulated by Solomon in 1 Kings. "Two women came to the king and stood before him. One woman said, 'Please, my lord, this woman and I live in the same house, and I gave birth while she was in the house. Then on the third day after I gave birth, this woman also gave birth. We were together, and there was no one else in the house, and only the two of us were in the house. Then this woman's son died in the night because she lay on him. She got up in the middle of the night and took my son from beside me." She got up in the middle of the night and took my son from beside me while your servant slept. She laid him at her breast and laid her dead son at my breast. When I arose in the morning to nurse my son, I saw that he was dead. But when I looked at him closely in the morning, clearly it was not the son I had born. But the other woman said, 'No, the living son is mine, and the dead son is yours.' And the first said, 'No, the dead son is yours, and the living son is mine.' So they argued before the king. Then the king said, 'One says this is my son that is alive, and your son is dead, while the other says, 'Not so. Your son is dead, and my son is a living one.' So the king said, 'Bring me a sword,' and they brought a sword before the king. The king said, 'Divide the living boy in two, then give half to one and half to the other.' But the woman whose son was alive said to the king, 'Because compassion for her son burned within her, please, my lord, give her the living boy. Certainly do not kill him.' The other said, 'It shall be neither mine nor yours. Divide it.' Then the king responded, 'Give the first woman the living boy. Do not kill him. She is his mother.' Does it not seem wise that one who loves another would willingly give up control of that one for the sake of their life? May you have the wisdom to choose life for the trans children who look to you for their well-being? I ask that you vote to regain the power to vote on procedures written by the superintendent when needed, and I ask that you return the policy to protect trans youth to the policy that truly does protect trans youth. Thank you.
Michelle Nordine?
Good evening, Chairman, Lords of Law, Dr. Mitchell and School Board Members. For those who don't know me, my name is Michelle Nordine, and I'm the Newport News Council PTA's president. I would like to give everyone an update on the state of our PTAs in our school district. This year, council is focusing on PTA, increasing our PTA membership. Council held a Call to Membership Challenge that ended on February 29, 2024. The PTA at each level with the highest percentage of PTA members based on their student population received a monetary award at council's general membership meeting last night. I would like to inform you that Hilton PTA won the elementary division with 48.6%. Huntington PTSA won the middle school division with 45.4%, and Warwick PTSA won the high school division with 9%. Warwick just left. I mean, no, that was Woodside, sorry. I'm confused. Even though Gildersleeve PTSA didn't win, I would like to give a shout out to them for having the most PTA members in the district with 257. Congratulations to all our PTAs for working hard to recruit PTA members. I'm thrilled to inform you that we currently have 3,029 PTA members in the school district. If you haven't joined a PTA this school year, there is still time to support your local PTA. You can join now through the end of the school year. An electronic link to take you to our Join a PTA website is located on our Facebook page, or you can Google Newport News Council PTA, and our website is the third result. Either one will take you to our webpage where you can find a PTA to join. I am delighted to inform you that we have 30 out of 35 active units that have submitted all the required documents to Virginia PTA to be in compliance. These are requirements from Virginia PTA that local PTAs must meet to keep their nonprofit status. I would like to let everyone know that council scholarship application is ready. Each year, council gives graduating seniors from each of our high schools the opportunity to apply for council scholarship. The requirements are listed at the top of the application. Since this is a PTA scholarship, the applicant must be a PTA member. Last night, council handed out 15 reflection awards. Eight of our entries were forwarded to the state level. A student from Hilton Elementary won honorable mention at the state level. Thank you for this opportunity, and thank you for your support in making every child's potential a reality.
Eric Burton?
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen of the School Board. My name is Eric Burton. I'm a bus driver for the Newport News Public School System. I'm also a key driver for one of our schools. I'm also on our rights and responsibility committee, along with a union representative and upcoming conference, and also a state delegate. I have over 10 years of transportation experience, ranging from school systems, theme parks, transit, and truck driving. We need your help on fixing our transportation system. We have everyday students that get on these buses, and we are expected to watch them, mentor them, make sure they get to home and to school safely. But this is very hard. We're losing drivers faster than what we can recruit them. Part of the reason is, we don't have access to synergy. We are one of the few departments that still do a paper referral. Due to that, when they get turned in, sometimes in order to keep students in our school systems and not to suspend them or do anything with them, we take them, we throw them in the trash can, and then never gets put in. We also are still expecting our drivers to drive over 50% of the buses without AC. We expect our students to also get on these same buses, even when it's 95 degrees or more outside. It's illegal to even put a dog or pets in vehicles like that, but we expect our children. We also expect these drivers to manage and make sure that there's no fights, no bullying, picking and harassing between these students while their backs are towards them. Make sure they are not distracted by traffic or other distractions on the road. We have parents going up to our drivers, yelling and cursing at them at the bus stops. We have to do all this without security or assistance. We're by ourselves out there. I am willing to help fix our transportation. We're asking for your help as well. Thank you very much.
Lysel Jones?
My name is Lysel Jones. I am an English teacher currently at Gildersleeve Middle School. Good evening to the good people of Virginia Newport News. An apology is due to parents and our guardians, the people that pay taxes at the federal, state, and local level. Those tax dollars are in part used to pay the salaries of the superintendent of Newport News Schools on down. An apology is owed to you because those funds, your tax dollars, are used for multiple resources like the HCS or Hampton City Schools curriculum. An apology is due because your notification did not fully express how radical the curriculum would be. An apology is due to you because you were not at the negotiation table to decide whether it be wise to implement this curriculum change three months into the school year. An apology is due because Newport News English Middle School teachers have not been formally trained by an expert from Hampton City Schools who could take us through and model what we need to do in order to actually complete a day's lesson in one day. As a result, we have pretty much, as teachers, have been winging it in the classroom. Yesterday, I sat through an introduction by Dr. Rogers. He stated in so many words that it can be hard for teachers to adapt or embrace change. You deserve an apology because at no time did he speak about parents and/or guardians and how this radical change in curriculum would impact you.
Saban Rogers?
Good evening. Thank you. My name is Sabine Rogers. I'm a parent of an 8th grader here at Gildersleeve Middle School. I'm here today to express my concerns over the change in literary arts curriculum and its negative impact on my childhood education. As a parent, we want the best for our children, and we want them to be afforded with every opportunity to grow and to learn. That's being stripped from her, and I need to understand why. Since the beginning of school year, she's been enjoying the instruction provided by her English teacher. She's being challenged to think outside of the box, think critically, take initiative, encouraged to collaborate with her peers, and to listen to others' perspectives. That came to a halt last week when her teacher was told that she needed to stop differentiating, stop adapting, stop supplementing the curriculum, and follow the script. After several phone calls, meetings, and some research, I discovered the curriculum was changed last year, and as you just heard, October 23, schools are notified; November 23, implemented. I was also told that this is completely unusual for normal curriculum changes. Although the new curriculum was implemented in November 23, my daughter's teacher continued to differentiate, adapt, and supplement to meet the needs of the students in our class. Tagged teacher with tagged students, my daughter's teacher was augmenting the curriculum based on guidance provided by Newport News Public School Gifted Services Program Guidance and the Administrative Code of Virginia and regulations governing education services for gifted students, which applies to all local school divisions in the Commonwealth. Gifted education programs are required by Virginia law as specified in the Virginia Administrative Code. The code defines appropriately differentiated curriculum and instruction as curriculum that is, an instruction that is adapted or modified to accommodate the accelerated learning aptitudes and, sorry, of identified students in their areas of strength. It further states that such curriculum instruction be offered continuously and sequentially to support the achievement of student outcomes and provide support necessary for these students to work at increasing levels of complexity that differ significantly from those in their age-level peers. First and foremost, I'm here for my daughter. I want to encourage the district to adhere to the Administrative Code set forth by the Commonwealth and empower teachers like Ms. Connell. She's having a positive impact on the students in her class, the lives of those students, and allow her to continue doing what Newport News Public School says is its mission every day, to ensure that students are college, career, and citizen-ready. In addition, I'm here for all students impacted by this change. I've seen the curriculum. It lacks consideration for the fact, just like each individual in this room, we take in information differently, we process differently, and learn differently. I implore you to vet the instructional material that has been implemented, engage teachers in that conversation, allow the teachers in the district, the professionals, to do what they do best. Thank you.
Heather Westheimer?
Hello, good evening. I'm here on behalf of countless coworkers, staff, and friends who currently feel overwhelmed as we've been embarking on new territory, to those who might feel discouraged as division-wide initiatives fall upon many teachers' backs. I come here as a Newport News Public School alumni, a parent, and a teacher. My learning target is to persuade our school division to work toward retaining more teachers for the subsequent school year by sharing some possible changes that can be considered for implementation, and that would fall under English SOL strands 5.1 and 5.7 for PLC purposes. Over the past few years, it's become apparent that our division required some new trajectory. After the shootings last year and evident gaps in our elementary literacy curriculum, attempts had to be made to help our division. However, after teaching the division for over 15 years, I don't believe I've had the opportunity to teach the same literacy curriculum more than two years in a row. My issue is not solely with the new curriculum, because any curriculum can have advantages or disadvantages, but at least this is consistent, and it contains many resources in my experience. My struggle's been with the abrupt implementation and contradictory messages provided once the curriculum was initiated. With the rollout being in October, teachers were provided, excuse me, teachers were at the height of routines being established and cemented. Since adoption of the new curriculum, many teachers are experiencing limited, unencumbered planning, trusting the expertise of our staff. Almost all planning periods contain administrators and related staff documenting our time collaborating. In addition, NNPS has started so many committees in an attempt to help that coworkers are often on two, some staying after school multiple days a week. All this, in addition to adhering to new unit plans and lessons, has been overwhelming for many educators. I believe our new curriculum would overall be better embraced with less rigidity inflicted on pacing and data. From the start of the newly adopted curriculum, contradictory messages about our ability to adjust the lessons have been presented. At least four times, we've been told from academic advisors and the DTO team to either personalize and supplement or teach the lessons as is, with the most recent request last week from our chief academic officer requesting staff compliance with teaching the curriculum and the associated assessments. On the topic of assessments, students take numerous weekly common assessments, and at the close of the quarter, there might be days where all students do is test online that day. Teachers are expected to have at least 95% test participation, and these scores are shared at our staff meetings, comparing our grade-level assessments to division-wide scores. The rigidity in data collection doesn't encourage us working at pace with our students, doesn't allow us to differentiate and enrich. This hyper-focus on data is not encouraging for students and teachers who are still adapting to new norms.
Thank you.
Thank you. And may I pass along a persuasive writing from one of my 5th graders?
Sure.
Thank you so much.
Cindy Connell?
Good evening. My name is Cindy Connell. I teach 8th grade tag English at Gildersleeve Middle School. I'd like to share with you some facts and opinions about the new mandated middle school English curriculum. Facts: Three years ago, I was tasked by my principal to adjust the 8th grade English curriculum so the tag students were being taught at the level of rigor that the division wanted. No one in NNPS during the course of the last three years has questioned my not using the provided curriculum because I'm teaching the same skills and standards as the curriculum. During the first nine weeks of this school year, middle school English teachers were told we had adopted the Hampton City Schools curriculum and would be using it beginning in the second nine weeks. As I was still teaching tag, I did not begin using the Hampton City Schools curriculum. My students have taken every Hampton City Schools assessment since this curricular adoption, and to date, we have scored significantly higher than 8th graders across the school system on every single assessment, and this is without using the curriculum materials provided by the division. Gifted students in Hampton City Schools don't even use the curriculum that I'm now being forced to use with my tag students. I have tried to voice my concerns using the established channels that Dr. Rogers spoke of in his March 13 email. One of those channels was a meeting in my school called by one of my colleagues to discuss ongoing concerns teachers have with this curriculum. I received an email invite to this meeting but was refused entry to the meeting by Dr. Barnett. Now on to the opinion piece. I began using the curriculum materials two weeks ago. I currently feel pushback for advocating for what's right for the students I teach. This curriculum is not meeting the needs of my students. With this curriculum, my students are disengaged, disheartened, and angry. I don't blame them. I am too. I love my job. It's not just a paycheck to me. It's what I'm meant to do, and I'm good at it. I put my heart and soul into it. Being forced to now bore my students with a redundant, disjointed, slides-based curriculum makes me not want to go to work. I'm now failing the students I teach. I feel as though my hands are being tied, and I don't understand why. My message is to parents who have a middle school student in the tag program. The tag program is dead. Tag English teachers are now forced to use the same curriculum as every other English class in Newport News. A curriculum that only has them stare at screens and read excerpts. No novel studies, no book projects, no independent reading, no creative writing, just slides meant to help them pass a test. They don't need any help passing in the first place. Thank you.
Adam Morrow?
Good evening, ladies and, good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the Board. On a completely different note from the important issues that have been raised before, I just want to bring something up. You've all probably received emails recently, at least one, probably more, about the school's policy on trans rights, and I just want to point out, everyone who sent that email signed a petition, but not everyone who signed the petition did. There's about 200 people who live in Newport News who signed the petition, and I, out of curiosity, a couple days ago, I looked up the margins for some of your recent elections. Some of them were thinner than 200 votes, a lot thinner. That's all I wanted to point out. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Gabriel Marquez?
Yes, good evening to the ladies and gentlemen in the audience, and I wish a good evening to the Board as well. My name is Gabriel Marquez. I am speaking as co-chair of the Tywater DSA, and I'm speaking as a father as well of a young daughter. I didn't prepare any eloquent words tonight. I didn't have time. I apologize to my fellows for that. So I'd just like to say, um, one second. Yes, I'd like to say that I'm here once again, because you've probably seen me before, to ask the School Board to amend the policy. to ask that the school board amend the policies preventing their taking of the vote, to revoke Governor Yonkin's model policies that were undemocratically adopted last year by the superintendent. Each day that we delay this vote and retain these policies, we prolong the psychological harm and trauma that these students must endure, and we increase the odds of physical harm possibly following them, as was the case in for next Benedict's who tragically passed. I have nothing else to say, really, I'm just so shocked that new actions have been taken on this, and I, again, ask the board that actions be taken post haste, and until actions are taken, I will be here, others will be here, and we'll continue our campaign. Thank you.
Okay, we will now move on to section three, the consent agenda, which includes three point zero one minutes from the regular meeting from February twentieth, twenty twenty four, three point zero two minutes from the work session, February twentieth, twenty twenty four, three point zero three minutes from the special meeting, February twenty twenty four, three point zero four financial reports, including the revenue report for February twenty twenty four, the expense report for February twenty twenty four, the child nutrition reports for February twenty twenty four, three point zero five, the personnel report, three point zero six, the budget transfer. At this time, can we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Madam Chair, I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Dr. Best?
Four.
Mr. Brown?
Four.
Mr. Harris?
Four.
Mr. Hunter?
Four.
Mrs. Alger?
Four.
Mrs. Amon?
Four.
Mrs. Searl's Law?
Four.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you. And the next item on our agenda, section four, action items. On the agenda this evening is four point zero one, the proposed twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five operating budget. Dr. Mitchell?
Thank you, Madam Chair. As you know, Scarlett Minto has shared the superintendent's proposed budget at our previous meeting, and tonight we will be asking you to vote on it, but prior to that, Ms. Minto will come forward to give an additional overview. Thank you, Ms. Minto.
Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Madam Co-Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Mitchell. Tonight, we will bring to you the superintendent's proposed fiscal year twenty twenty five operating budget for board's consideration and approval. This spending plan will support the goals and vision set by the school district's strategic plan, Journey Twenty Twenty Five, and the priorities we have identified during this budget cycle as we stay the course. I just want to mention, it does take a village. Um, at this time, I would like to personally thank our executive and senior leadership teams, department heads, my budget, staff, and human resources for all the support and hard work that it has made it possible to bring a balanced budget for approval tonight. I also want to give a shout out to the city manager and city finance for their support during this process. For the superintendent's proposed fiscal year twenty twenty five budget, we are projecting total revenue of three hundred and eighty-six point six million dollars. This projection includes an increase of state funding of one point seven million, a city request of three point five million, and no change expected in federal or other revenue for a total increase over fiscal year twenty four of five point two million. We continue to make compensation a priority to ensure we can attract and retain the most qualified staff. The superintendent's proposed budget includes a general staff increase of two percent, maintaining the division teacher scale with one point five percent between steps between one and thirty, increasing teacher pay, starting pay to fifty-three thousand, and funding, as funding permits provide support staff compression adjustments. During our budget planning process, we have identified eighteen positions funded by grants that we need to fund now and operating as this grant support is ending this year, eight family engagement specialists to ensure we have support at all elementary and middle schools, and ten technical support specialists to ensure we are able to properly support the classroom one-to-one technology. The intent is to repurpose vacant positions on the associated funding to have a net increase to the operating budget of zero. Taken into consideration public and school board feedback on the superintendent's proposed operating budget, we went back to the drawing board on the health plan recommendation. After reviewing our options, we have determined the healthcare cost increase of thirteen percent and associated increase to the school board premiums can best be offset by healthcare plan changes, and therefore, we are no longer recommending an increase to employees' health insurance premiums for health plan year twenty twenty five. So all employee healthcare premiums will remain unchanged for the plan year twenty twenty five. Balancing this superintendent's budget was a combination of decreasing operating expenses and pulling out capital items to be considered by the city for cash support. Beginning with personnel, a two percent salary increase for all staff is an increase of five point six million. Eight family engagement specialists and ten technology support specialists is an increase of one point four million. Reduction in twenty-seven teaching position is a savings of two point three million. An increase in health plan cost to the school board is estimated to be two point four million, and a health plan design change assumption is a decrease of four hundred thousand. City pension increase of one point five million, other post benefits, a decrease of three hundred thousand. Virginia retirement premium, reduction of savings of nine hundred thousand. For non-personnel, contract services savings of one point six million. New Horizons increase estimate two hundred thousand. Fuel and utilities increase three hundred thousand. Educational materials increase five hundred thousand. Turnover and attrition, a decrease of five point three million, a one-time savings cost of one point one million. In addition, uh, city cash requests for operations and maintenance of five point eight million, a city cash request for safety of three point six million, a city cash request for technology of six hundred thousand for non-one-to-one technology, and a city CIP cash change of two million for student computer refresh, and includes keeping the bus replacements for two million. Total budget to approve tonight includes the general fund, three hundred and eighty-six million, five hundred and ninety-six thousand and twenty-five dollars, workers' comp, two million, three hundred and twenty-eight thousand, four hundred and eighty-six, textbook fund, six million, thirteen thousand, five hundred and twenty-six, child nutrition services, twenty-five million, seven hundred and seventy-seven thousand, five hundred and twenty-nine dollars, and for a total of four hundred and twenty million, seven hundred and fifteen thousand, five hundred and sixty-six dollars.
At this time, I can take any additional questions you may have regarding the superintendent's proposed fiscal year twenty twenty five budget. Board members, do you have questions? May I please have a motion to approve the proposed twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five operating budget?
Madam Chair, I move to approve the FY twenty five proposed budget in the amount of four hundred and twenty million, seven hundred, fifteen thousand, five hundred and sixty-six dollars.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Great. And any discussion? Mr. Brown?
Madam Chair, just a, I guess, a point of question in terms of where the state is, where their budget. Um, so should we pass this budget tonight? This is not necessarily the end. Um, do we have any ideas of, just a general idea of the timeline when we'll have a final budget from the state?
We have to pass a budget because we have to have a budget downtown by the end of the month, and then when the governor approves his budget, we will be back for an update and a recommendation to how to manage the change.
Okay. Great.
So this is round one?
Round one. Good way to put it. Are there, are there questions at this time? Ms. Minto, I just really want to thank you for all the hard work. This was a budget I was dreading, because it's at the point that we are done with CARES Act funding, and as much as we want to say we didn't rely heavily on it because we knew it would go away, it was hard not to for the adjustments and changes that we needed to do during a tough time. So hats off to you and the superintendent. I know I called several times, and you all were meeting, and I knew you were doing the hard work of the division, so thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
My pleasure. Dr. Best?
Four.
Mr. Brown?
Four.
Mr. Harris?
Four.
Mr. Hunter?
Four.
Mrs. Alger?
Four.
Mrs. Amon?
Four.
Mrs. Searl's Law?
Four.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is four point zero two, the twenty-four, twenty-five proposed school calendar. Dr. Mitchell?
Thank you again, Madam Chair. As you know, Ms. Tracy Brooks has come before you previously to present the proposed calendar. Just as a reminder, Ms. Brooks does work with a committee that has people, various stakeholders on it. Um, you've had an opportunity, as you continue to have one, but you've had an opportunity to ask questions. It was posted, Ms. Brooks did respond to each person that had any inquiries, any questions about it, and at this time, we would ask that the board consider adopting the proposed calendar for next school year.
Okay. May I have a motion to approve the proposed school calendar?
Madam Chair, I move to approve the twenty-four, twenty-five school year proposed school calendar.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Hunter. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Dr. Best?
Four.
Mr. Brown?
Four.
Mr. Harris?
Four.
Mr. Hunter?
Four.
Mrs. Alger?
Four.
Mrs. Amon?
Four.
Mrs. Searl's Law?
Four.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is four point zero two, the twenty-four, twenty-five proposed school calendar. Dr. Mitchell?
Thank you again, Madam Chair. As you know, Ms. Tracy Brooks has come before you previously to present the proposed calendar. Uh, just as a reminder, Ms. Brooks does work with a committee that has people, various stakeholders on it. Um, you've had an opportunity, as you continue to have one, but you've had an opportunity to ask questions. It was posted, Ms. Brooks did respond to each person that had any inquiries, any questions about it, and at this time, we would ask that the board consider adopting the proposed calendar for next school year.
Okay. May I have a motion to approve the proposed school calendar?
Madam Chair, I move to approve the twenty-four, twenty-five school year proposed school calendar.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Hunter. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Dr. Best?
Four.
Mr. Brown?
Four.
Mr. Harris?
Four.
Mr. Hunter?
Four.
Mrs. Alger?
Four.
Mrs. Amon?
Four.
Mrs. Searl's Law?
Four.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is four point zero two, the twenty-four, twenty-five proposed school calendar. Dr. Mitchell?
Thank you again, Madam Chair. As you know, Ms. Tracy Brooks has come before you previously to present the proposed calendar. Uh, just as a reminder, Ms. Brooks does work with a committee that has people, various stakeholders on it. Um, you've had an opportunity, as you continue to have one, but you've had an opportunity to ask questions. It was posted, Ms. Brooks did respond to each person that had any inquiries, any questions about it, and at this time, we would ask that the board consider adopting the proposed calendar for next school year.
Okay. May I have a motion to approve the proposed school calendar?
Madam Chair, I move to approve the twenty-four, twenty-five school year proposed school calendar.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Hunter. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Dr. Best?
Four.
Mr. Brown?
Four.
Mr. Harris?
Four.
Mr. Hunter?
Four.
Mrs. Alger?
Four.
Mrs. Amon?
Four.
Mrs. Searl's Law?
Four.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you for that vote. We will move on to section five, reports and information. Five point zero one, special education annual plan. Dr. Mitchell, who do we have before us?
This evening, we have before us Ms. Vivian Mutulo, who is the Director of Special Education. She will share the proposed spending plan for funds that are allocated for special education. As you are aware, this special education plan is an annual plan, and it is guided by specific requirements that are embedded in the presentation. So thank you, Ms. Mutulo, and we're
Good evening.
We anxiously await your presentation.
Good evening, Chairman Searl's Law, Vice Chairman Best, board members, and Dr. Mitchell. Tonight's presentation is an annual requirement to inform the board of the proposed spending plan for funds allocated by the federal government based on the requirements outlined in the application. Local education agencies are required to submit this application each year pursuant to the federal provisions of the Individuals with Disabilities Act of two thousand and four, as well as the state regulations governing special education and related services for students with disabilities. Prior to the submission of the plan, the Virginia Department of Education requires that the local division present its plan to the local school board for approval and for review by their local special education advisory committee. We are required to assure that we are providing a free, appropriate public education, that each student's program is designed for them and is documented on an IEP, and that students are educated in an inclusive environment to the extent, extent that their educational programming permits. Finally, we must maintain a structure that prevents the over-identification of students in special education in general or in specific categories. We currently serve students in each of the thirteen disability categories. Our federal funding is based on the number of students with disabilities receiving services on December one. On December one, twenty twenty-three, we were serving a total of three thousand, six hundred and seventy-six students with disabilities. Currently, we are serving three thousand, seven hundred and ninety-six students, which reflects an increase of a hundred and twenty students since December one. In addition to the assurances, the annual plan requires that the division submit information on expenditures and some selected programs. For maintenance of effort eligibility, we make sure we are budgeting at least the same amount on special education supports as was spent in the year maintenance of effort was most recently met. Included in the selected programs is the local jail program where services are provided by licensed special education teachers to students with disabilities who are currently incarcerated. Another component of the plan is the supports for students with disabilities parentally placed in private schools, including home-schooled students for which we offer special education services. It is important to note that the administrators from the private schools collaborate with our staff to identify the provisions of special education services to be made available to the parentally placed student. In previous years, the decision has been to offer speech-language services to those students who are found eligible. In addition, we collaborate with these programs to offer professional development and assist families with child find. The last component is the funding expenditures. It is separated into two sections, six-eleven for pre-K through twelfth grade and six-nineteen for preschool special education only. State and federal, state, federal, and local funding support the special education program in its entirety. The Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, six-eleven and six-nineteen combined, represent nearly seven point three million of the overall funding. We are proposing to continue to utilize this funding for personnel, including apparent resource coordinator which is required by the state, and extended school year services for those qualifying students. Approximately one hundred and twenty-six positions are supported by this grant. I would like to close out this presentation by sharing some of the highlights from the Office of Special Education and Student Support Services during the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year. Professional development opportunities included in-person and on-demand options for special education teachers, instructional assistants, and long-term substitutes. In-person professional development focused on strengthening skills in the identification and implementation of specially-designed instruction. We are working with our fifth cohort of special education teachers in residency, which includes that were updated to align them with the goals in the School Division Strategic Plan, the Students' Rights and Responsibilities Handbook, and our Youth Development Initiatives. The goals and objectives promote rigorous and relevant learning experiences, support safe school environments, and establish clear expectations for student behavior. Next is a procedure that addresses the administrative transfers of students from one school to another. To ensure that the procedure adequately reflects the administrative transfer process currently in place, we added four transfer approval categories to the procedure. So, transfers may be considered, as space allows, for one, students residing on a military installation or a military housing, which we are required to do by federal law; two, for the sibling of a student already attending the requested school; three, for fifth, eighth, or twelfth grade students who are currently enrolled in a school but have moved outside of the school zone during the year; and four, for a program not offered at the student's own school, such as ROTC, Latin, or dual-language immersion. We also added that families are responsible for providing transportation to and from school for students on an administrative transfer. This next procedure addresses the health requirements for students enrolling in the school division. We updated the procedure to add the state code provision that a physical examination is not required for a student whose parent or guardian objects on religious ground and the student shows no visible evidence of sickness. We also added a provision for students experiencing homelessness who cannot furnish the required medical records. These students will be referred to the school division's homeless liaison, who will assist them in meeting the physical examination and medical records requirements. And in keeping with the state code, home instructed students must comply with the same immunization requirements as students who are enrolled in the school division. In our admission of non-resident students policy, we added language regarding children of full-time school division employees who do not live in Newport News but are seeking enrollment in the school division. As our practice has been for several years, the school division will waive tuition annually for the children of non-resident employees for initial and continue enrollment if specific conditions are met, which are outlined in the procedure to the policy, such as requiring students to remain in good standing regarding attendance and behavior and, as space allows, in the requested school. Now, currently, students who have been suspended or expelled from another school division are not permitted to enroll in Newport News schools during the period of their suspension or expulsion. We expanded the admission of suspended and expelled students policy to prohibit students who are facing community charges in other school divisions from enrolling in Newport News schools. These students will be referred to our school division's Program Administrator for Student Conduct and Discipline, who will investigate their situations and render a decision on when the students may be eligible for enrollment. Next, for students, excuse me, for students who are enrolling, who are entering Newport News schools from other school divisions at the high school level, this policy addresses the placement of those students in classes and the course requirements that are required for each specific grade classification. Additionally, the revised policy removes the requirement for students to be enrolled in or have previously passed the English course associated with the student's current grade level as a consideration in assigning the student's grade classification. This next policy addresses administering medications to students and was revised to align it with a standing order from the Peninsula Health District. So, in addition to authorize and train school nurses and public health department employees, now our licensed athletic trainers under contract with Newport News schools may also possess and administer albuterol, epinephrine, and meloxone to any student believed to be having an anaphylactic respiratory or overdose reaction on school premises during the school day. Now, under this last procedure, state law authorizes the school board to charge student fees to recover funds for loss or damage to school division property, such as textbooks and equipment. The procedure was revised to allow the school board to charge fees for electronic devices, such as student Chromebooks, when lost or damaged. So, in terms of our next steps, the revised policies will come before the school board for action at your April sixteenth meeting. And once approved, the revised policies and procedures will be posted on our school division websites and disseminated to schools and public libraries. So, this concludes my report this evening, and I will be happy to respond to your questions or to note your suggestions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Board members, do we have comments at this time? Any questions? Yes, Mr. Brown.
Yes, so, I have comments about in regards to JCA and JQ. So, in regards to JCA, it does say that the assignments will be made in accordance with the approved plan by the school board. But one of the things that I think the board we should consider is how often we review the plan and/or approve the plan. So, it's one thing to say that we will have a plan and will vote on it, but how often will we review and vote on the plan for assignments of children to school?
Yeah.
So, I think that's something that we should consider. And then, in terms of JQ, recovery fees, I think the recovery fees, that language potentially is too narrow because we do have activity fees or cost-sharing fees that we include as well in the Rights and Responsibilities Handbook. So, I think to bring the policy in congruence with all the umbrella fees that we do charge, that we should consider adding the cost-sharing language to the policy as well, so that covers those fees and/or revise our Rights and Responsibilities Handbook to be in congruence with the policy.
Okay.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I think when we initially developed the procedure, we based it on the state code requirements, so we can definitely reflect our practices in the school division. So, thank you very much.
Other comments or questions at this time?
So, can I ask, the policies involving student admissions to school, is that, is that something I can ask questions about at this time? Am I okay in doing that? Is that, okay? Just a question about the physical exam is not required of any child whose parent or guardian may object. I thought a requirement was
Religious reasons.
I'm sorry, for religious reasons, right. I thought it was a requirement for kindergarten entrance. Is that an exception or? Or does that apply?
So, you mean state law, it's state law?
Right, state law, right. That's what I was
That's something that we can waive.
I'll have to check on that, Mrs. Alger.
I'm just gonna say, we can, we can get to an answer on that.
Yeah, because for kindergarten
Because I thought that was required upon entering school, and I wasn't sure if that was
This is regarding the waiver for religious reasons you're talking about?
Yes.
I'd need to look at that and then
Okay.
can weigh in as well.
So, we will check on that.
Okay. I was just wondering about that. Also, the admissions to school, I was thinking in terms of, and I don't know if, I'm just, questions I have about individuals who may not have proof of address, such as individuals who are undocumented when they move into the area. I believe they have to provide two pieces of evidence as far as where they live. And I'm wondering if we can look at that, that practice or procedure internally and see if we can adjust that so that there's more flexibility.
Such as students coming, refugees.
Right, whether refugees, immigrants, right, yes, or undocumented. Thank you.
Yes. We will do that.
Miss Aiman.
Yeah, I just wanted to go back to, because I, and the, back to the admission to school. I know there are exceptions, there are exemptions, like there's medical and that sort of thing, because I've practiced, personally, seen that. Explain a bit more about the child being home or excused from school attendance. Are we talking students who are enrolled in Newport News public schools, but they're at home? Or is this, my concern is that's going beyond our scope if we're talking about students who aren't attending our schools.
Which, which specific?
This is JF dash P. It's the second paragraph, it's highlighted yellow, under immunization record.
And I do not have that in my spec, so I will have to get back with you on that.
It's the home instructed student, so just making sure we're not going beyond our scope on that.
Okay. We'll check on that procedure. Thank you.
Any others? Thank you for the briefing, we appreciate it. Obviously, we will be in touch.
Yes, indeed, thank you.
We'll move on to five point zero three, curriculum implementation update. Dr. Mitchell.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is our final presentation of the night. And as you are aware, we did make a curriculum shift this year. We do feel it is very important to share where we are in the implementation process. Tonight, you will see some areas needing growth. You will also see some areas where there has been growth. And at this time, Dr. Rogers will provide a curriculum implementation update. Thank you, Dr. Rogers.
Thank you, Dr. Mitchell. Good evening, Chairwoman Searls Law, Vice Chair Dr. Best, School Board Members, and Dr. Mitchell again. This evening, I will provide you with a high-level academic update on our progress with curriculum, instruction, and assessment. In the presentation, I'll share briefly about our progress with curriculum instruction and assessment writing, with our streamlining the curriculum project. I'll also give you a high-level overview of how our implementation of the Hampton City Schools and the Newport News Public Schools curriculum implementation and student progress is going. Lastly, I'll share how these elements support our instructional program and ensure ongoing student success in our school district. What you see in front of you, if you remember, at your October meeting, we shared SOL accreditation data and targeted intervention to address literacy and numeracy at the elementary, middle, and high school levels, and especially in English and science at all grade levels. Those areas still remain a focus for us, and we are paying special attention to our progress at the middle school level and science, as well as in English. And also, as a reminder, in the fall, we did review the extensive curriculum audit and longitudinal SOL data and determined that we would make a shift in our curriculum to use the Hampton City Schools curriculum in all content areas in grades K through five, as well as in English classes. And we still maintain our focus at the middle school level. I do think it's important to note that in Virginia, our educational system does operate under the guidance of the standards of learning. And these standards serve as a cornerstone of our academic expectations, outlining what our students should know and be able to do by the end of each grade level or course. However, it's also important to note and understand that while the SOLs establish the what of education, the standards themselves, our local division holds the reins when it comes to crafting the how, and that is where our curriculum comes into play. The curriculum does encompass the instructional materials, the resources, and the strategies that our dedicated teachers utilize to deliver the content that's outlined in the SOLs. And it's the dynamic framework through which we bring the standards of life, excuse me, standards of learning to life in our classrooms. So, our teachers of students with disabilities, our English language learners, and our gifted learners are expected to work collaboratively with teachers and instructional staff in order to differentiate curriculum in order to meet the needs of the learners that they teach. So, I do want to focus also on our work with Allison Zamuda and streamlining our curriculum. We've spent a lot of time focusing on the vision of literacy in Newport News, as well as with curriculum writing. And our team has done a fantastic job with that, and we're excited to share our progress with our principals on the twelfth of April. So, I want to speak about fidelity of implementation of the curriculum. One of the findings in the curriculum audit was a lack of fidelity of implementation across the school division, across grade levels, and across schools. At the heart of our educational mission is the commitment to consistency and excellence in curriculum implementation across all of our schools. And in order to achieve this, all teachers are expected to adhere to either Hampton City Schools or the Newport News Public Schools curriculum, ensuring alignment and coherence in supporting both students and staff throughout our district. And it doesn't matter whether they have an IEP, whether they're an English language learner, or whether they're a gifted learner. Teachers are expected to differentiate the curriculum in order to meet the needs for those students that they teach. In order to ensure fidelity of the implementation of the curriculum, we maintain a robust system of monitoring and supporting schools to uphold those expectations. And this does include monitoring through lesson plans and classroom observations, both coupled with actionable feedback and tailored professional development to support teachers that may be having difficulty with implementation of the curriculum. So, by leveraging that feedback loop, we can capture the strengths and identify areas of growth in the curriculum implementation. And our principals play a key role in that process. So, for example, during our student support team meetings, we are diligently adhering to the state's requirements by aligning our curriculum with the standards of learning. And we do recognize the importance of this alignment in ensuring that our students receive a rigorous and comprehensive education that prepares them for success. So, now, I'll share some data with you. So, as you know, we are piloting the vows of the Virginia Language and Literacy Screener in place of the PAL's Phonological Awareness and Literacy Screener. This assessment is our mid-year assessment, what's shown on the screen above, data that shows promising increases in key literacy skills, including coding, letter names, letter sounds, and real-world recognition. And to support that growth, we've implemented targeted strategies in our January professional development, including strategies that show teachers how to include explicit instruction, giving corrective feedback, as well as scaffolding. And during our SST meetings, we have a direct line communication with Dr. Mitchell, myself, and many other team members to support our schools in problem solving. So, I want to share a little bit about the reading inventory progress. So, the reading inventory is an assessment that's designed to evaluate our students' reading abilities, how to monitor student reading progress, how to set goals for reading growth, and match students to books at appropriate reading levels. So, across grades three through five, there have been notable increases in both advanced and proficient levels, both in reading from the fall to mid-year. Grade three saw a significant twenty-eight percent increase in advanced and a seventeen percent eight increase in proficient levels. Grade four demonstrated a twelve percent increase in advanced and ten percent increase in proficient levels. Similarly, grade five showed a twenty-two percent increase, a twenty-two percent increase in advanced and a fifteen percent increase in proficient level. These positive trends indicate substantial progress and growth in students' reading skills over the specified period of time. And our DETAL team, or Department of Teaching and Learning team, is focused on addressing those areas in which we need to continue growth. So, these data on the slide in front of you show our progress with the Hampton City Schools curriculum at the elementary level, and they show the change in student proficiency on formative assessments since we started using the curriculum. And it's important to note, I did not share the specific percentages because these are formative data that are designed to use for adjusting instruction to meet student needs. So, what I've shown is a change in proficiency. So, for example, in analyzing the elementary reading common assessment data, we see varying trends across grades three through five. Grade three experienced a decrease of twelve percent in the percentage of students meeting the benchmark from the last two unit assessments, unit six and seven, and a notable decline of twenty-nine percent since the first unit four back in October when we began using the curriculum. Conversely, grade four saw a significant increase of twenty-six percent in meeting the benchmark from the last two unit assessments, unit six and seven, with a corresponding rise of fourteen percent since the first unit four that was given when we started. Grade five demonstrated a more modest change with a three percent increase from the last two unit assessment, six and seven. since the first, a six percent increase since the first unit four assessment. To address the areas in needing support, several action steps have been implemented. So for example, a recent Hampton City School site visit was conducted on March sixth and allowed our team to review the opportunity to see it in action in the whole group, and they brought that information back. So I want to share some information relative to math common assessment data at the elementary level. And we've noted significant progress in grades three, four, and five, with notable increases in the percentage of students meeting benchmarks from the first to the most reading unit assessments. The positive trends that we see in grades three, four, and five are indicative of effective instructional strategies that are being implemented with fidelity, as well as with student learning. So in response to these findings, we've implemented a series of targeted initiatives to further support student achievement and enhance instructional practices for our teachers. And those include providing administrators with tools such as the math class observation tool and offering weekly office hours for guidance and support for our teachers and our administrators. Direct and actionable feedback is being shared with administrators and teachers in order to promote those best practices, as well as discourse in math instruction, which comes as a direct result of the curriculum audit that we received. Additionally, we allocate, reallocating resources to provide tier-one support at select schools and facilitating ongoing collaboration through bi-weekly Zoom check-ins with our math interventionist. Our elementary science common assessments and analyzing science data, we've observed positive trends in science performances across grade three and five. Grade three exhibited a significant fifteen percent increase in the percentage of students meeting the benchmark from the first to the last common unit assessment, while grade three saw a little more modest increase of three percent over the same period of time for units six and ten. In response to those findings, we've implemented a series of targeted initiatives to further support student achievement and enhance instructional practices in science. SOL review booklets, questions, and activities have been deployed, developed, and distributed, providing students with valuable resources to reinforce concepts. Administrators are also using the science classroom observation, or we call it the Scott, well, the state calls it the Scott Tool from the Virginia Department of Education, and Ann Peterson has visited us a few times to lead those trainings with our staff and administrators. In order to provide a more focused support, our specialists are actively engaging in those trainings as well. And part of the challenge that, well, I'm going to say challenge, but as the board back in the fall, you all asked us to think about a way in which we can engage our families and community in science, and you should have gotten a little gift bag that promotes our side pack that will go out next week for students to use in grades five and eight. So I want to transition to the middle school English Common Assessments from Hampton City Schools. In reviewing the middle school English Common Assessment data using the Hampton City Schools curriculum, significant improvements have been noted across all grades in the school division. From the first to the most recent common unit assessment that we have access to, oops, we have access to, grade six demonstrated a substantial twenty-eight percent increase in meeting the benchmark, while grades seven and eight showed increases of seventeen percent and twenty-three percent respectively. To support these positive trends of reading comprehensive, reading comprehension, collaborative efforts with reading specialists are underway to provide targeted support for our grade six through eight teachers, and this does include modeling, planning, and in-class support. So I want to direct your attention to a couple of things. One, for instance, when we examined division rankings based on SOL pass rates, considering all SOLs, Newport News Public Schools saw an overall pass rate of fifty-four point eleven percent in two thousand twenty-three, which is an improvement from fifty-one point forty-two percent in two thousand twenty-two. And while there's room for growth, the upward trajectory reflects our dedication to academic excellence and student achievement in Newport News Public Schools. Comparatively, Hampton City Schools has experienced a pass rate of sixty-eight point eight nine percent in two thousand twenty-three, showcasing their continuous improvement efforts and effective curriculum implementation. While the challenges remain, we are steadfast in our commitment to continuous improvement by leveraging data-driven decision-making and prioritizing student achievement. We will continue to enhance the curriculum that we are using and supporting system, and support systems for our English language learners, our students with disabilities, and certainly our gifted learners, to ensure that every student in Newport News receives a high-quality education. Part of the work that we're doing with Allison Zamuda is focusing on how do we revise our curriculum, K-12 and all content areas across all grade levels. And that work has started, that work started back in October, shortly after we made the adjustment. And the team has done a phenomenal job in making those changes in preparation to all of our curriculum. And we anticipate it being a wonderful addition to Newport News Public Schools. So as we work to elevate our educational practices and support our team's capacity in curriculum writing and assessment writing, we've embroached, we embroached, we've embraced the approach of being what Allison Zamuda calls wildly consistent. And what that means is maintaining a steadfast commitment to consistency and reliability in our efforts, ensuring that our actions and support systems remain unwavering and dependable to support our teachers and our students. One aspect of being wildly consistent does involve regularly reviewing data and promptly, promptly responding to the needs of our schools, our students, and especially our teachers. We prioritize just-in-time deployment of resources during those SST meetings, ensuring that assistance is available precisely when and where it's needed most, and that's present company included. And I stand ready to meet with any teacher or principal who has a question about the implementation of the curriculum. While we acknowledge that there are areas for growth, we are proud of the progress we've made, as you can see from the data that I've shared, in reviewing and responding to the needs of both teachers and students. So with that, I am happy to answer any questions that you might have, and I also have members of the team, the supervisors, who have been just on top of things in terms of making sure that they are prepared to write curriculum and assessment in the manner in which it should be done in Newport News Public Schools.
Thank you for your very timely report.
Sure.
Board, board members, do you have questions at this time? Go ahead, Dr. Beth.
Okay, thank you for your report.
Of course.
I'm going to start, I think about your third slide, you talking about fidelity. And can you go, can you go back to that one?
Yeah.
The one about fidelity.
This one?
Mm-hmm. Bullet, bullet number four, sharing curriculum implementation concerns directly with superintendent, chief, academic officer, and other departments. How is that kind of working? I'm, I'm just wondering.
That's powerful. It's an extremely powerful, so what we've done is we meet with all schools, we've been meeting with all schools, and we've done at least one cycle. We've about finished with the second one. If we've not finished the second cycle of meeting with every school. And what every school's been asked to do is bring your data, English, math, science, social studies, and let's talk about the consistency, let's talk about the assessment, what are the strengths, what are the opportunities for improvement? And more importantly, what's been most powerful from, from those conversations is at, at the end, we ask them two things, to what degree is the curriculum being implemented in your school, and they're quite honest, you know, hundred percent, ninety percent. And we talk about the ninety percent. What are the barriers associated with the ten percent that aren't implementing the curriculum, and how can we help? And they're very candid and honest with sharing that, and sometimes that means I have new teachers, I have guest teachers, I have substitute teachers, I need some support immediate, and we're able to, because we meet all together, to immediately deploy support. So sometimes that happens that same day, we're out sending instructional specialists or coaches, or sometimes supervisors actually into the building to provide some support, or at least have a touch point with that teacher to say, hey, let's schedule some time and I can come in and help you with planning. Another powerful piece of that is at the end, one of the last things that we ask them to do is tell us what you need. And in those instances, they're very specific and very candid, candid about sharing what their needs are. And it, you know, sometimes it's asking for additional staff, and we'll, you know, put that in our parking lot. And sometimes we're able to provide them with some additional staff support, and in terms of a tutor or some additional support in a classroom. So those conversations have been extremely powerful in addressing some of the pieces of information that they see based on the data in terms of support at that point in time. So we, again, we meet with elementary, middle, and high school. We certainly start with our schools that have the greatest level of need first, and then work backward.
And Dr. Rogers, if I can also add, there are multiple principals in the room at a time, so they sometimes are learning from each other. So while I might have a certain thing on my list that I need, and then I hear you after me, then I may come back and say, oh, that sounds like a great strategy, or that sounds like something that I could use that I hadn't thought about. And I think it's important, as Dr. Rogers said, there are many people in the room, there are supervisors, there are, there are, there's someone from Human Resources right there, so that if a school says, I need X, Y, and Z, HR is in the room to be able to say, let's figure out how we might be able to make this happen.
Okay. Mrs. Alge and I, we go and visit the schools, and one of the things that we ask teachers is how is it going? And for the most part, with the exception of the implementation, they all have something to say about the implementation pretty much, but they're kind of over that now. They say it's going pretty well. But we've seen a little, I'm trying to think of the word, well, differentiation, because we have seen some things such as anchor charts and things like that, not, not everywhere, but some places, so. It's, overall, though, they, they struggled initially, I'm just giving you the honest feedback, but they're, it kind of turned the corner and, and making it work, and that's the kind of feedback that we're kind of getting. So, so Ms. Alge, you can share maybe something.
Um, yes, because that's something that we look at. I, I mean, we look at some of the instructional work or looking around in the classrooms. But I, I'm also curious in terms of, so I'm going to switch a little bit, in terms of the common assessments and its relationship with the reading inventory. So my assumption is that the common assessment is on grade level, that it's written for, for example, the third graders to read a third grade, have third grade basically readability.
Yes.
So if they're not reading and the reading's not too strong, and I'm assuming these are the third graders that, I think kindergarten
Correct.
were, stayed home.
Right.
And stayed home for a year and a half, I would suspect there's a level of, of struggle.
So Ms. Alge, I see exactly where you're going, and I raised the same, similar question relative to where students are with the Hampton City Schools curriculum and the common assessments. You see a disproportionate relationship between third grade and fourth and fifth grade, conversely to what the reading inventory shares. We attribute that to a couple of things. One, to what you just shared. Two, to fidelity of implementation and being able to navigate whole group instruction and the small group instruction. And having ninety-five percent of the students actually take the assessment so that it's reflective of what, of, is reflective of the actual cohort of students that took the assessment. So for example, sometimes it's challenging to, if you, if you have a class of, I use middle school as an example. If a class of a hundred students in total, you have four classes of twenty-five in each student, in each class. If you only assess eighty students get to assess for that particular assessment, and you have twenty students that didn't get a chance to take the assessment, for whatever reason, absences or what have you, if, by the time you get your data back and you only have sixty percent of your students meeting the benchmark that was set, you still don't know how the twenty students who didn't get a chance to assess are in terms of how to meet their needs. So that also may be true for the third grade students because of just where they are in terms of those students, the number of students who completed the assessment.
Okay.
Early on.
So they may have shown growth based on the reading inventory, which is a positive thing, but they're not reading on level yet.
I don't want to say that, I would, would say that it was, it's attributable to fidelity of implementation and navigating the change because the, mostly for third grade in the, the earlier unit assessments, unit four, if I'm not mistaken, and five, there were some challenges because it was a new curriculum and getting used to the assessments that were associated with it.
Okay, okay. Additional questions?
One other question, in terms of the ninety-five percent completion on the local assessments, if you could just talk to how, why is that important, you know, especially for any teachers that are watching and how it's important, what it compares to previously? Because I recall previously I asked this question
Yeah.
last year about our local assessment, and the completion rate was not ninety-five percent, it was much lower. And how did that affect us and our ability to assess and envision?
Mr. Brown, that's a really great question, and it's one that, you know, if any of the principals could probably share, you know, what Dr. Rogers share. It's, we got to know what kids are knowing and what they're able to do in order to be able to help them. And if we don't know what they know and are able to do, then it's hard for us to help them. The ninety-five percent completion rate is not anything that we made up, it's an expectation, it's a national expectation for any national assessment. You're expected to have ninety-five percent participation, and rationale behind that is if you only have eighty percent of the students completing any assessment, then how do you know whether twenty percent are relative to what they know and are able to demonstrate that they're able to do? It's an expectation that's national. Same thing holds true here. If we don't know where our students are with the assessments, the common assessments that were given based on what should have been taught, then it's hard for us to deploy our resources, our coaches, our instructional specialists, based on data. If you've got twenty students that don't know how to add and subtract fractions, how do you know you don't have twenty students, you don't, you have students that don't know how to add and subtraction, add and subtract, if you don't have data to support what you're doing? Otherwise, you can still provide remediation and support, but it's so much better if you're able to have some data where students are able to demonstrate the first time that they understand what should be taught. So that's the rationale behind the ninety-five percent. Now, there's a date by which we extract data at the district level, so we can have the SST conversations about, you know, you have seventy percent of your algebra students understand the skills that were taught in unit five. What about the other thirty percent? We may not have those data right now at that point in time, and the onus is on the school to make sure that they understand whether thirty percent that did not have the assessment completed for whatever reason, absenteeism or whatever other conflicts, that school is responsible for finding out what skills those thirty percent of the students that didn't get to take that assessment need so that they can offer support to the school and then communicate with us the support that they need to help the thirty percent of the students.
Mr. Harris.
I think that last statement, at, at what point do we take their responsibility from the principals, if need be, or probably not? If we need ninety-five percent of the assessment, I mean, shouldn't, I guess, directors or whatever the case may be, be able to make that call and say, hey, you know what? We need twenty percent, you didn't do it, let's go do the assessment.
So schools do have that flexibility, and what, what we do is, and oftentimes they'll even send an email and say, hey, can you open up the window because we had classes on a field trip? You know, so it's not finite that they can't, you know, assess. And because sometimes they're very short window of time before we have conversations so that we can help them, then, you know, they have to do that work back at the school level. And then we end up circling back and offering support based on certain situations where they have to recapture some of the students that weren't able to assess.
And I, I will just add, as you said, Mr. Harris, our directors and executive directors, they are in the meetings
Oh, yeah.
with us, and so they are very much aware of which schools are not hitting the ninety-five percent. And once they leave the meeting with us, then they have individual conversations with the principals about what you're playing to, to assess these students.
So I think a really good example of that is our secondary math supervisor has had an aha moment at one of our last data discussions where she was comparing the algebra unit assessment during this time of year as compared to last year. And what she found was that the, there were over three hundred students that did not assess last year as compared to the number that assessed this year, and the, the number of students who, that the benchmark was markedly different between the two years, which made her which made her wonder, where were those other 300 students in terms of that skill? And had we known at that point in time, could we have done something earlier rather than waiting to expedite them once the SOL assessment? So it's those kind of conversations that are powerful and taking place. Because it, so I know it's a little bit of a culture shift in terms of, you know, the assessment piece. An assessment piece is something that we constantly have conversations about, and it's intentional to make sure that we are able to provide support. We have a whole lot of people that are super smart that are able to help our teachers and our principals figure out what our students' needs are before the end of the school year so we can catch what the needs are all along the way.
And at the end of the school year, there is an expectation from the state that at a minimum, 95% of students.
That's an expectation. We have a, yes. It's an expectation, and we're dealing with some issues right now as a result of not meeting that expectation previously.
Previously. Other questions? Oh, yes, Aiman.
Um, a couple. One, I, I believe there was a timing difference in rollout of different grades.
There was.
The curriculum, so I don't know, could that help shed some light on the reading common assessment changes? And then with so many assessments, are there different forms in which they're giving you? There may be students who aren't strong assessment takers. They might need a more one-on-one versus logging on to do it. So kind of what's being done to get the real information on how the student's doing versus what if they were just having a bad day or just that's not, they need maybe additional assistance and.
Sure. But it depends on the grade level, and it certainly depends on whether a student has accommodations or not to take an assessment a different way. We certainly follow the law and make sure that we are meeting the students' needs relative to assessment. And those are the conversations that are held at the building level to have conversations with the principal and other instructional leaders if a student needs a, a different avenue in which they can take the assessment. The expectation is still that they assess on the skills that were taught, but the manner in which that done is highly independent to the student, if needed.
And then any information you can share on when the curriculum changes were rolled out and how that may have impacted our reading assessments?
For which grade?
Like three to four.
So there was a staggered rollout based on where they were in the existing curriculum. And I don't have that information directly with me, Lori, can you? I don't, I think it was just where they were in the curriculum at the time. And then we didn't want to push it all at once. That was one.
They finished one unit.
Right.
Before they start, so a hard stop with the unit before they started a new unit in Hampton.
Did the, did third start first or fourth start first?
Third, fourth and fifth all started.
The same time?
Same time, in reading.
Okay.
So I think it was October 8th, right? Or 6th?
Literacy started at the new marking, quarter two, beginning of the marking period, new unit. So they closed up, this is the nine weeks, or first nine weeks.
And have there been conversations, I'm going to shift gears here for just a second. Have there been conversations and/or collaboration between gifted services and just general the English curriculum as far as differentiating and being able to roll out Hampton and keep some of the additional things going on?
That's a really good question. So I was, that's a really good question. To the degree to which those conversations have been held, I'll need to get back with you on that. I need to meet with Dr. Beckertite. I've sent her a couple of emails. I know I have offered to have a conversation and not been able to hold that conversation just yet with some members of, of the gifted teaching staff at the school level to see what the, what the level of misunderstanding may be. Because my expectation was that we differentiate for students with disabilities, differentiate for English learners, and differentiate for gifted learners. I'm a former gifted teacher at Hines Middle School, five, six years. So I always differentiated the curriculum based on what I had. So I'm a little struggling a little bit.
I think that would be good.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Last question, just for, for context. Because I think we did have this discussion at the beginning of the year. Why, why, why didn't we just wait until next year? Right? So we, we did feel the need to get this rolled out this year, but what's the context for? There was a need to roll this out this year as opposed to waiting until next year?
So the, I'll go back to my original comment. We, long before I got here, there was an extensive curriculum audit that was conducted. Both prior to my getting here, one of the recommendations that, one of the findings was that there was misalignment between curriculum, the manner in which the curriculum was being delivered, people doing their own things and using teachers paid teachers and not following the curriculum as presented, and the manner in which students were being assessed. That was a huge issue. One of the recommendations was for us to take a close look at what we were doing with curriculum at the elementary level in English and in math, and at the middle school level in English. And the feedback that was received from teachers was profound in terms of the focus groups, that there was a need to have a, a great revision in that aspect. The other piece is at the middle school level particularly, has had some challenges in literacy for quite some time. So there was a, a cry to do something different. My understanding before I got here, that Hampton City Schools curriculum was looked at and considered prior to my getting here. So I spent the better part of the summer poring through it. And I have some familiarity with the curriculum in Hampton City Schools just because of, my wife was a principal in Hampton, Hampton City Schools. So I was a little familiar with it. So I had an opportunity to take a deep dive, and I lost a little bit of sleep from making the shift. And one of the things that, that, another thing that the teachers asked was for ease of use. And they found our curriculum a little challenging to navigate and wanted something a little easier. Hampton City Schools curriculum, wow, you know, I don't know that it's better. I think it was implemented differently with more consistency and with more fidelity than Newport News Public Schools was. Of course, I know that now, you know, hindsight. And there was a need for a shift. We have schools that are chronically underperforming. And I don't know that it's all associated with curriculum. I do think some of the issues and challenges are associated with adults. And not necessarily being compliant. And I, I don't know that it's always doing what's right for students. I think sometimes some of the choices we're doing what's right for adults. So the decision to shift to Hampton City Schools, they had a model that's tried, tested and true. You saw the data and where they stand of 131 school divisions in the state of Virginia holistically. We share the same students. So a student could be in Newport News Public Schools today and transfer to Hampton City Schools tomorrow. And then the next month, they can come back to us. So we share the same students. So the wonder that I have is, well, what's the difference? The difference is the manner in which we implement what we have access to. So we have super smart people who are supervisors and are hardworking. I don't think I've worked with more hardworking people at the central office level, especially given the situation that we're in right now. We just didn't have the time to navigate new curriculum based on the data that we had available to us. What we did have was a resource next door and a school division who was willing to partner with us shoulder to shoulder, recognizing the situation that we're faced in and recognizing that we share resources and, and people. So the decision was certainly not taken lightly, but it was one that was done in the spirit of doing what's right for all students in Newport News Public Schools.
Thank you.
Yeah, and can I?
Let's see, Ms. Aiman, you're next.
I was going to piggyback just off on the Hampton City. And I know there's a shift coming at the state as far as what we have to. So we.
Correct.
Add to anyways at some point. And we did just adopt additional resources. So like, what's the vision for how much change that's going to create over the summer? Or is it going to kind of weave in with what we're doing? What can teachers, staff, kids expect over the summer and coming back next year?
So at the elementary level, we are, we've adopted, thank you, adopted our benchmark advance. So the team has already started planning for that and actually started preparing for that adjustment. And we expect to be able to share information with our, our, our teachers very soon, soon after we come back from spring break. So there's not a wonder in terms of what we have in store for the summer and that they can begin preparing for fall. At the secondary level with secondary middle school, English, our team is very much poised to begin doing their, their own thing throughout work with Allison Zamuda and preparing with our curriculum and preparing our assessment writing. We still have some work to do in that area. But I feel confident that my team is poised and ready to go. As I initially stated when we started, using Hampton City Schools curriculum. We still have a little bit to go. And we are certainly ready to share what we have to get feedback. We've gotten feedback from teachers, but again, we've invited all principals as an optional opportunity to come and take a look at what we have in terms of our curriculum template and what we're thinking relative to UBD and UDL, which is just a format or methodology of approaching curriculum writing and assessment writing. So that will take place on April 12th. So full speed ahead, and, you know, I don't want to share, overshare in this venue. I'm happy to have that conversation with you after we have some discussion with our team. But they're chomping at the bit to do their own thing, and I'm chomping at the bit to let them do their own thing and say, damn, those who are writing, actively writing curriculum. Because I think we've done the work and the preparation and the study in collaboration with Allison Zamuda, so it's not, and she's an expert in the field of curriculum writing. And I couldn't be more proud of the, the staff here who have definitely risen to the occasion. And probably one of the things that I'm most proud of is math at the elementary level. Because that was a substantive change for them completely and totally. And as you can tell by the data, they are certainly making improvements and seeing the increases that we'd like to see from the day-to-day basis.
Okay.
I just.
I guess.
Yes, I just want to add that I, I think one of the important things that I'm hearing is that we're operating with one voice versus perhaps silos. And I think that that's important. I also feel that a lot of adults do well with feedback. If we continuously give feedback and it's positive, I think that that to me seems to move the, the needle a whole lot. If we take care of our teachers, our teachers will take care of our children. And that's, you know, I, I truly do believe that. And with professional development, making sure that they have planning time and all those pieces that are critical and their voices embedded, we certainly should expect an excellent year and ending the year really well. So I just wanted to.
That is the plan.
Thank you for, yes, for your presentation. It was great, yeah.
Any other comments from board members?
Well, yes, thank you very much for your presentation. And I do hope those additional conversations occur for you all because the amount of work that you all have put into this, that needs to be realized by everyone. And everybody being on board is, is where we need to be. And understand, as you said, the differentiation is important. So I, I know that you all will focus on that as well. So thank you.
Thank you.
5.04 attendance report, 5.05 membership report, 5.06 construction report. Board members, you have received a copy of this report. Are there any questions? Okay, hearing none. We'll move on to item 5.07, comments by the superintendent, Dr. Mitchell.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. I will begin my comments this evening by announcing that the youth development department has been awarded a Silver Magna Award by the National School Boards Association for its innovative infrastructure and programming. Our youth development department emphasizes student empowerment and leadership, inclusivity, positive school culture and mentoring while teaching important social and emotional skills. We do want to congratulate the youth development leadership team as well as our school-based staff who support, engage and empower our students. I want to really give a special thanks to our activities directors, youth development leads, empowerment coaches, gun violence intervention prevention site directors, live well student wellness coaches, our school-based club and activity sponsors, and then our athletic directors and coaches. Please keep up the big, the good work. This award will be officially presented to our team during the National School Boards Association Conference in April. And again, it is a national award, and we did win a silver. We are shooting for gold. I will be honest and say I was disappointed. I, I thought we should have gotten a gold, but we'll take the silver this time. This, I'm pretty competitive, you know? The, and this is two years running that we've gotten silver, so we, we're due for a gold. The program will be featured in the April issue of the American School Board Journal. So we are quite proud. Newport News Public Schools has again been selected as a system of top schools by the Virginia Living Magazine. The 2024 list appears in the state education section of the April edition of the magazine. It is now in newsstands across the state. Newport News Public Schools has been recognized for our commitment to college career and citizen readiness. They also noted our AP courses, dual enrollment, early college STEM CTE, and our early college, early careers program, which many school divisions do not have, which supports our students as they move forward in careers and additional educational options. This is the third year running that Newport News Public Schools has earned this recognition. We do always want to acknowledge our students. Three of our Odyssey of Mine teams earned topped honor, top honors in the 2024 Tidewater Regional Tournament held on Saturday, March the 16th. And they will advance to compete in the state finals April 16th in Northern Virginia. Those teams are from Knollwood Meadows, Booker T. Washington. They earned first place in their problem and division. And then the team from Warwick High School earned second place and will also advance to the state. So congratulations to those teams, and we wish them much success. Our students continue to dominate. Congratulations are also in order for several of our archery teams. During the 2024 Virginia National Archery in Schools Tournament on March the 9th in Dawswell, Virginia, three teams qualified to advance to the Eastern National Tournament, which will be held in Louisville, Kentucky in May. B.C. Charles team earned third place, fourth in bullseye competition, fourth place in bow hunting, 3D competition, and will compete at the Nationals in both categories. We do have a middle school represented as well. Ella Fitzgerald placed fifth in the 3D competition to move on to Nationals. And Menchville High School took third place in the bullseye competition and earned fourth place in the 3D competition. And they also will compete in the Eastern National Tournament. So we wish our archers all the best at Nationals. We also have students who advanced from this year's All-City Tidewater Science and Engineering Fair, which was held March the 10th at Old Dominion. Newport News represented 23 of the 104 projects from the Tidewater region. Our 28 participating students received a total of 26 awards.
That is outstanding.
And at first, I thought we, we had 20, we represented 23 of the 104 projects. And I was like, well, how do we have 28 students? But then I had to remember, we have teams, we have teams. So 28 of our participate, participating students received a total of 26 awards. So that's pretty amazing. That's pretty amazing. So congratulations to all of our student scientists and engineers. Please visit our website for the list of our winners because the list is pretty long. We also want to acknowledge our students who participated in the Artistic Verses Program in partnership with Christopher Newport University. It's the 30th anniversary of Artistic Verses. This year, up to 30 students from each high school. Had the opportunity to view an art exhibition right here down the street at CNU and engage in poetry writing with a local poet named Nathan Richardson. Students wrote original poems. All of the students were invited to read their poetry. Congratulations to the first place winner, Maya Pridgen from Woodside High School. Second place winner, Arianna Frazier from An Achievable Dream High School. And third place winners, there were two, there was a tie, Shanaya Painter from An Achievable Dream High School and Molly Wisinger from Menchville High School. And lastly, just a quick reminder to students, families and staff. On Friday, March the 29th, all students dismiss half-day. And April 1st through the 5th is the spring break. All schools and offices will be closed. On Monday, April the 8th, schools are closed for students. It is a planning day for. It is a planning day for teachers. So we wish everyone a happy and safe break.
Thank you, Dr. Mitchell. We'll move on to item six, another opportunity to hear from the public. Uh there's a lot going on in our school division. I am very, very proud of the the work we are doing. Um we have several cards remaining. So just a gentle reminder that you'll see the green light at the beginning of your comments, uh yellow light at thirty seconds, and a red light to please um conclude your remarks. So uh Mary Voss.
Hello, uh Mary Voss, an N P S teacher, uh parent and graduate. Um thank you to board members for considering a change to board policy in order to require a board vote on controversial procedures as discussed during the February board meeting. Uh many citizens have contacted the board about N N P S's implementation of Governor Youngkin's anti-trans guidance. And citizens deserve an up or down vote on this procedure and on other controversial procedures to know where their elected officials stand. Uh please note that we are not calling for all procedural changes to be voted on by the board as this would be time-consuming and unnecessary. And it is appropriate for the superintendent to implement most procedural changes for N N P S independently. However, when a procedural change leads to extended public controversies, such as in the case of the implementation of Youngkin's discriminatory guidance, a board vote is important for public transparency and accountability. Um also, I want to implore the board um to please push back against board or city lawyers who claim that Youngkin's guidance had to be implemented. The numerous Virginia school districts that have ignored or outright rejected Youngkin's guidance proves that this is simply not true. Richmond, Fairfax, Prince William, Arlington, Alexandria Falls Church, Hampton, Portsmouth, Chesterfield, Henrico, and Loudon have not implemented Youngkin's discriminatory guidance because it violates federal and state anti-discrimination laws. Um and none of these districts have faced lawsuits from Youngkin or from Virginia Attorney General Jason Mayares. However, the A C L U of Virginia has filed multiple lawsuits against districts that did implement Youngkin's guidance. Um so I would suggest seeking a second legal opinion. Uh please protect our vulnerable students by making this right regardless of questionable legal advice. Now I'm going to read an excerpt from the March fourteenth Washington Post article titled, "In States With Laws Targeting LGBTQ Issues, School Hate Crimes Quadrupled." School hate crimes targeting LGBTQ plus students have risen sharply in recent years, climbing fastest in states that have passed laws and policies restricting LGBTQ student rights in education, a Washington Post analysis of F B I data finds. In states with restrictive laws and policies such as Virginia, the average number of hate crimes on K twelve campuses has more than quadrupled. Carden is a transgender seventeen-year-old in a conservative Virginia county whose last name was withheld for safety reasons. Twice this fall, a group of freshman boys at Carden School harassed him for his gender identity, uh calling him queer, um in a nasty tone, he said. Another time, after telling him a pride flag he had tucked into his backpack was pitiful, one of the boys suggested suggested Carden should just go die already. Since his election in twenty twenty-one, Virginia Governor Youngkin uh has encouraged schools, I'll I'll stop right there, but um Governor Youngkin's policy is causing um uh uh anger and uh discomfort for trans students. Um please uh call on a board vote. We deserve to know where our elected officials stand on this issue. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Bentley Manning and I'm an eighth grader at Gildersleeve Middle School and a tag English student in Ms. Connell's class. I feel there are many issues relating to the curric- curriculum and I feel that Ms. Connell's tag classes should not be doing the same lessons and content as other standard eighth-grade English classes. Most of my classmates all loved the projects we were doing in Ms. Connell's class, like literature circles, fairy tale story writing, and First Chapter Fridays due to the fact that they are very creative, interactive, and hands-on. These projects and assignments we were doing, I feel as well as many classmates and friends feel, they are more beneficial and helpful to our learning rather than doing root words, suffixes, and affixes in almost every class. The rigor of Ms. Connell's assignments make us think hard while the curriculum makes me not want to think because of how constant and easy it is. Ms. Connell has grown and enhanced my love for English enormously, and I wouldn't give that up. I feel that due to her hard work and dedication towards us, the students, my skills have grown substantially, and I will always be grateful. I feel that learning the skills are important, but what is more important overall is that we know how to apply these skills on S O L and test day. And learning the basics the curriculum is teaching us is simply not enough. I want to know and feel very confident when going into my English S O L in high school, for that matter, that I have the best knowledge of preparedness I can. English should not just be about skimming the surface so we know what's on the test we have to pass. English is a skill I will need to have for the rest of my life. And writing essay after essay doesn't help me understand English as a whole, but stops me from expanding my knowledge for the future due to the fact that an essay doesn't teach me everything. I know for a fact that Ms. Connell is looking out for our best interest, but it seems that you all respectfully are just looking out for whatever will give you the best test results rather than what is truly best for us to students. Every one of Ms. Connell's lessons have helped to truly prepare me and my classmates for high school in the future, but the curriculum is only trying to prepare me for the next test. And for Ms. Connell's classes, we all pass those tests that you give us. So from my perspective, I don't see why if Ms. Connell's strategies are working well, if not better than the curriculum, why can't we continue the fun and helpful lessons that she makes? The curriculum isn't strengthening my knowledge, so why would it be something to continue if it isn't working from students' perspectives? Nobody that I have heard from has taken an interest in the curriculum. Not only are we constantly doing the same content, but some of the content is a bit out of line. For example, a few days ago, we read a part of the play Teen Mogul, and the only word our class could agree on to some of the story was sexual. I feel that should not be the type of text displayed to eighth graders. I do hope you will consider letting the tag students go back to doing our regular fun activities and still delivering the test results you want as well as eliminating the curriculum factor as a whole. Thank you so much for your time.
Ryland Harris.
Hello, my name is Ryland Harris and I'm an eighth grader at Gildersleeve Middle School and I am a student in Ms. Connell's tag English class. During the course of starting these new adjustments, I have noticed some concerns regarding our new curriculum. The context and level of instruction we are receiving seem to be misaligned with the capabilities and expectations of a tag English class at our grade level. The curriculum seems to be arranged on preparing us for standardized tests and assessments that are not only easygoing, but we have also successfully excelled in. The repetitiveness of constantly writing essays, while an essential skill oversh- overshadows the necessity to engage with new and challenging material that is needed for the growth and readiness for high school. Ms. Connell's teaching style has been instrumental in enhancing my love for English, significantly improving my reading and writing abilities. Her approach extends beyond test preparation. It inspires creativity, critical thinking, and a genuine passion for literature and language. However, the current curriculum constraints limit her ability to fully implement a more diverse and enriching learning experience, which I and many of my peers would greatly benefit from. Learning the same concepts daily is not beneficial to a thriving educational environment. It can lead to dullness of our learning, dampen our enthusiasm for English, and potentially cause disengagement from the subject itself. As bright, engaging learners, we crave the opportunity that comes from exploring new ideas and being challenged to stretch our thinking beyond the standard frameworks of English. It is important that the curriculum follows fosters an educational journey that is not just about excelling in tests, but nurturing well-rounded individuals who are prepared for the diverse challenges of high school and beyond. We need a curriculum that evolves with us, one that recognizes our previous accomplishments and sets a path for new academic achievements. If you really cared about our future and success in high school, you would prioritize a curriculum that goes beyond the basics and repetitive tasks. Engaging with diverse and challenging material not only cultivates our learning, but ensures that we are well-equipped for the demands for higher education in the world outside of school. Thank you for your time.
My name is Addison Jakeway. I am an eighth grader at Gildersleeve Middle School and I'm in Ms. Connell's tag English class. Recently, I have noticed some issues with the curriculum. My classmates, my classmates and I are in tag English, which means we should have more challenging, hands-on, and at least different learning activities from the other English classes. Being stuck doing boring, repetitive, and repulsive tasks that only focus on a couple skills such as test-taking and root words do not help me with my future. In Ms. Connell's class, we did fun, hands-on, creative assignments that helps us with a variety of different skills. We do different essay-writing prompts to prepare us for the I R W. We learn socializing skills by having partners and working together, which is very important, especially for jobs in the workplace, which our age is very important to practice. We are, we also watch poetry in a form of March Madness. It gets students engaged and excited to learn about something they might not want to. That goes for every assignment that she gives us. Since starting the slides, I went back to hating English like I always have. Ms. Connell had found a way to teach us that doesn't make us, make me dread going to school. She's an amazing teacher that all of her students are incredibly lucky to have. She knows what steps to take to help us grow. And Ms. Connell could easily sit and scroll through the slides. It would save her time, money, and effort, but she wasn't. She knows that for our good, we need to do what she is teaching us. She was doing what was better for our future and more advanced classes later in life, while we feel the slides are helping us with simple test testing skills and craft we have already excelled in. Our classes pass all of your state mandated tests with Ms. Connell's teaching style. Isn't that all that you have the drive for us to do, pass the tests? Learn, let us learn more about reading passages. Let us learn more than reading passages and answering questions. We are in tag English and need to be prepared for even more challenging English class, English classes because most of us are not going to be ready for next year honors English doing these slides. Thank you for your time.
Karma Heifer.
Hello, my name is Karma Hifo and I'm a student in Ms. Connell's eighth-grade tag English class at Gildersleeve. I'm here today to speak on my behalf of Ms. Connell and my peers about the slides the school board wants us to use. They are boring and they do not intrigue me and others into learning. Many and many of my peers feel the same. This year, I have thoroughly enjoyed English and I could say would even be my favorite class because of Ms. Connell's way of teaching. But the school board and the curriculum have taken away the critical thing about this class is that it's intriguing. By Ms. Connell's way of teaching, I have done my work, kept my grades up, and read in her class more than I have read in the last four years. The work we have done so far has been repetitive, not interesting, and rather disturbing. What we have learned, I have learned in previous grades or could have been taught better by Ms. Connell. Many of the reasons I enjoy Ms. Connell cla- Ms. Connell's class is that we are always doing something new or exploring new ways to learn, and the slides have been copy and paste, making me other, making me and others uninterested. Being uninterested means that we will no longer have the the desire to walk in class and attempt to keep our grades up, giving a bad reputation to the school system when we have been getting great grades compared to the entire eighth-grade district. And another reason why the slides are not good for our students is because they do not get changed or checked. The disturbing story I read on March thirteenth, twenty twenty-four was a play about a fifteen-year-old girl casually being seduced by an older man using context words such as rock my world, I like a woman that eats, and talking about going on dates. If these slides are going to be used in this material, this is inappropriate and not teaching any morals, and it's normalizing this behavior. This is gross and unprofessional for the editors to be adding and or not changing this type of work. Going forth, these slides and their rules take away pure reading time and critical learning skill skills that Ms. Connell teaches us, such as walking, walking in groups with people we may or may not like, finding other viewpoints, using inspiration, and the most important thing, creative and factual writing, and that actually teaches us life skills. The way Ms. Connell has been treated for trying to be a good teacher is insane. A big problem we have today is kids not attending school for many reasons, one being that they are not captivated or engaged because of copy and paste slides like these. Why would you make um because the slides are these?
That's okay.
Why would you make things more boring when kids are already bored? In closing remarks, I would like to say the school system and especially the students would be losing a great teacher. Thank you.
William Finkler. William Finkler.
Thanks for letting me speak. I had something written. I don't think it's necessary. You should listen to the students that have spoken here tonight. I do wanna read a few things from this. The Curriculum Audit Executive Sub summary for Key Findings and Recommendations for English and Language Arts. Quote, generally, the reviewed units had clear evidence that the standards and relative curriculum frameworks were used to create the units. Additionally, minor and moderate revisions to the number and quality of understandings and essential questions provide an opportunity to increase cognitive engagement for students. You have professionals in this district who know their job. Please let them do it.
Lucy Thornton.
I'm going to present to you a petition formed by Samantha Salyers, signed by four hundred and ten of my peers, and I will give it to Ms. Searle's Law after I make the speech I have prepared. Good evening, my name is Lucy Thornton and I am here today to talk to you about my English curriculum. I am currently enrolled in eighth-grade tag English at Gildersleeve Middle School. I have been made aware that the school board has decided to implement a new English curriculum. Apparently, the uncle, the other English classes have been using this curriculum for fourteen weeks. My English teacher, Ms. Connell, has been speaking out against it. On March eleventh, we had a test day to explain what is involved in these lessons. Honestly, I find it to be mind-numbing. It's just a series of slide shows where we have to write notes, then go on our Chromebooks and read an article and write more notes about that. I've been told that this curriculum is made for students that aren't in the tag program, which leads me to wonder, why have a tag English class at all if it isn't advanced? My teacher is additionally certified to teach students that are gifted only to be forced to use this incredibly simplistic curriculum? This format is not stimulating even a little bit. We're children and we need to be challenged to grow. This, I can't speak for what the regular English classes were doing before they had to start the new curriculum, but for my class, before the implementation of this new curriculum, we got to participate in a variety of engaging activities such as fairy tale projects, literature circles, bento box, bento box book projects, and mock trials. Now it's an endless stream of boring slides and articles. I can advocate for every single student in my English class by saying this is not acceptable. We find this change to be both insulting and detrimental to our learning. Additionally, as part of this new curriculum, on March thirteenth, we were required to read a scene from pa- from a play called Teen Mogul. The consensus in my class was that this scene was extremely inappropriate for a school environment. It consisted of a man who interviewed a woman, young, a young woman aged fifteen at complimenting the way she ate. He continued to make multiple comments that many of us found to be creepy and weird. I know that you care deeply about both the level of rigor in your curriculum and about allowing your teachers, especially gifted certified teachers, to have some level of freedom and choice when it comes to implementation of the curriculum. Please stop subjecting us to this. Thank you.
Ash Chergon.
All right, I'm gonna change subjects a little bit. Good evening, Dr. Mitchell, members of the school board. I'm here to talk about Governor Youngkin's policies on LGBT students again. It has now been four months since Dr. Mitchell unilaterally implemented Youngkin's model policies. Four months of pain and suffering for gay and transgender students in your care. Last month, Mr. Brown referred to the po- powers of the superintendent in Newport News, unique among Virginia School Board districts, as the bugaboo that was causing public confusion over policy J B P. Let me be clear, we are not confused. While the superintendent's power to implement unilateral procedure changes do need to go, that is not what is at issue here. Making that change isn't some consolation prize. The only outcome that is acceptable is the total reversal of policy J B P. There isn't anything on the agenda to that effect tonight. You've already gone through your action agenda and your consent agenda, and you didn't address this. This board continues to sit on its hands. You continue to remain silent, complacent even, in the face of children suffering and public outcry. You ought to be ashamed. The seven members in this room were elected to represent the interests of their constituents, and your constituents have spent months making it clear what they want, listing statistic after statistic about the harms that your policies are doing and advocating against your continued leaving this district open to lawsuits. You stand tonight in dereliction of your duties. The least you owe your constituents is a clear vote on policy J B P. I call on the board to give us a clear yes or no vote on whether or not this policy should stay in place. Do what you need to make that happen, but it is your duty to respond to the concerns of your citizens. You cannot continue to hide behind silence like this. If you don't want to take a clear stance on issues, don't run for public office. You hold in your hands the well-being of thousands of students, and thousands of students are directly affected by policy J B P. It has a direct impact on their well-being, and you owe it to them to tell them where you stand on it. The good people of Newport The good people of Newport News deserve the information of where you stand on policy JBP and how you'll respond to the outcry of citizens, federal court precedent, and the clear evidence that your policy is harmful. Give us a vote. Make your position clear. Thank you.
Valerie Fashion?
Good evening, Dr. Mitchell and the school board members. My name is Valerie Fashion, and I am an advocate for my grandchildren and the thousands of kids in this school district. According to W E B Du Bois, and I quote, "We want our children trained as intelligent human beings should be." They have a right to know, to think, to aspire. First, I'd like to thank you all for implementing the two tutoring programs that are at these schools, and their children are really engaged in these programs, and I think it's beneficial for them. Next, education is critically important to society. Public schools have served to develop children's ability to participate as active citizens in our nation's democracy. In addition to helping them secure personal gain, prepare for productive work, and accomplish individual goals, education has been expected to create responsible and active participants in American democratic society. Since removing the textbooks and the sight words from your curriculum, spelling and the reading results are not favorable for the students. We have lots of public school students, I'll send the grades three to twelve, that are reading their below their prospective grade levels, sometimes by two, three, and four years. My grandson's in kindergarten and he's having a problem correctly spelling these words because he's not given any words to study for the test. It is not acceptable to give a spelling test without giving students the words to study. I'm demanding that these spelling words be given to all students. How are the parents supposed to help these children pass and become productive citizens if they're not able to help them learn how to spell these words? I have a grandson in the sixth grade. There's no books. These kids come home with empty, plastic, clear book bags. Assessments for these students, the students are not doing well on these assessments. Some of the students are not doing well on the assessments. In twenty twenty-four, this district is not teaching the students the items that we learned back in the sixties and seventies, which was reading, math, spelling, and writing. I do not understand. What is the reason? Again, I inquired about the spelling bee that WHRO is having. I was informed that a student was picked from Booker T. Washington Middle School to compete in the spelling contest. I've assumed that the spelling contest should have been, there should have been a competition between the eight middle schools to select a representative. I don't understand why one person was just selected to be in the spelling contest. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Kayden Legg? Kayden Legg?
Good evening. My name is Kayden Legg and I am a student at Gildersleeve Middle School. I'm here to address the curriculum that is being enforced upon my and every other English class in Newport News. My first issue is that the fact that everything on these slides are the things that we were taught in third grade, and to be honest, it is bland and unengaging. I feel the urge to goof off more in class and not pay attention because I can still do good on the assignments without listening or participating in class discussion. It is not peeling in the slightest. My next issue is that we are not allowed to read anything that we want. We have to read preset passages that are picked from the middle of a story with no context given. And some stories are inappropriate for the school environment. For example, the Teen Mogul assignment showcased and normalized the sexual harassment of a minor by an employer. To add that, in these slides that you have mapped out for us, we do no fun assignments and no small group activities. To me, this makes me feel like you are trying to suppress our social skills. We are required to sit in front of a computer all day, which was bad enough, but now you are limiting our ability to socialize. My last reason is that my class is a tag class, so why the sudden change in having us do what everyone else is doing? We are different. That is why we are in the tag program. So what is the point of the tag label if we are learning the same as everyone else? I speak for my fellow classmates when I say the way Ms. Connell has taught us was far superior. In her class, I felt challenged and like my imagination was working every minute. The slides you make us do feel to me like you just grabbed my imagination by the wings and stuffed it in a box. You make sure that every teacher tells us to think outside the box and not to fit the mold, then why are you confining us to it? Sure, you might say, it's just one class. You'll be fine. But how long until all of our classes are this way? Imagine being in our shoes. Think about what it's like to feel like you are being held back from reaching your full potential every day, and then maybe you might understand our point of view. Thank you and have a good evening.
Ronald Lee?
Good evening. I've watched dozens of World Outreach Worship Center services online and found Pastor Everson thanking Doug Brown for encouraging him to bring Life Wise Academy to Greenwood or Richneck Elementary School. Life Wise is an off-campus Bible study during school hours. In October, Mr. Everson also mentioned receiving guarantees from the board that JBP would pass. What was amazing, though, is that as I listened to these services, I learned. It was almost as if somebody put an alphabet chart in front of me and it said I C G O D. So like Saul and Damascus Road, God sent a messenger to me. I've since had the truth revealed to me. Please forgive me for all those things I said. Thanks to Doug, I listened to God instead. To help me recognize public education's morality drip, I now see why God asked someone in the school board to pass a tip to a pastor with a creepy gender-based power trip intended to cure the district from our diversity ick. Board, you must understand, I assumed there was no God at all, but now I know it's cynical. It's simply that the interests aren't particularly broad. He's largely undisturbed by the starving masses or inequality between the various classes, mandating strictly binary sexist, supported here by elected Christian nationalist fascists. Tell me, what are the odds, with history's endless parade of gods, that the God you happen to be taught to believe in is the actual one and his focus is school board meetings? What? But not the malaria-ridden African populations, or the victims of the plague, or the genocidal war-mongering nations. Instead, the focus is healthy children wanting gender affirmations. The Worship Center's God's intention has but a single explanation. He's a homophobic God who demands school board intervention. It couldn't be mistaken attribution of causation born of coincidental temporal correlation exacerbated by general lack of education, confusion in a church's congregation, and it couldn't be that all these pious people are liars. It couldn't be an artifact of persecution bias, a product of groupthink, mass delusion, or an even greater fear of exclusion. No. God is more likely to be an all-powerful magician, more focused on a student's sexual condition than the activism of a Christian nationalist commission, or even the Worship Center's secular opposition exacerbated by right-wing inflection. The only explanation for their God-caring is because they pray to all-knowing superbeing, to the omnipresent master of the universe, a God that liked the sound of Everson's stigmatizing curse. So forbid of a change from his usual stunt of being a sexist racist murderous punk, he updated JBP with Youngkin's junk. So thanks to Mr. Everson, a January sixth sympathizing jerk, I now understand how activism works. You only need a particular prayer in a particular church, in a particular style with a particular stuff, and for particular problems that aren't particularly tough, and for the particular people, preferably straight, for particularly ideologies, preferably right, a particular prayer in a particular spot to a particular version of a particular God, and if you get that right, he just might take a break from giving babies malaria and work towards ending gender preferences in academia. Why would you ask them to bring that program to a public school?
Reverend Michael Burnett?
Thank you, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, members of the board, Madam Superintendent. I'd like to commend you on taking initiative with policy CH to limit the unilateral and evidently rather unique authority of the school superintendent to implement procedures without a board vote. I understand it's currently being workshopped in the policy committee to work out exactly which procedures are best handled solely by the superintendent and which are, to borrow a word, bugaboos. Contentious policies. I'm not sure that's gonna be technical language. I'd love to see it in there, but I'm not gonna hold my breath. Contentious policies that have large public outcry, that really do need a public vote. I take this for what it is, an acknowledgement explicitly connected to procedure JBP by your own words, that that policy should not have been written in to our procedures without a vote. And it occurs to me that even if policy CH does get passed, it doesn't retroactively affect JBP. It's still on the books. It also occurs to me that we don't need to pass policy CH to undo procedure JBP and give it the vote that you have explicitly admitted it deserved in the first place. So do the integrity thing. Put your money where your mouth is. Put it on the agenda for next month. We'll be waiting. Thank you.
Last card, Hannah Salisbury?
Hello, my name is Hannah Salisbury and I'm the founder of the nonprofit organization Bibles in Schools. And we exist to donate engaging bibles to public school libraries. I was a former special education teacher, and my second-grade student checked out an old King James Version Bible that was outdated, and, well, not outdated, it was worn. And he loved reading it, and I saw the need to get engaging bibles in our public school libraries. Bibles in which students could read at their reading level and had pictures in them. So in two thousand and nineteen, I launched the nonprofit organization Bibles in Schools. Since then, we have donated to thousands of public schools across the United States. And the librarians tell us the students love the Action Bibles because they resemble graphic novels, and that's what students love. Some of the popular comments that we get are, they cannot keep the bibles on the shelves. Their waiting list of students wanting to check out the bibles. And they also say that is one of the most popular books checked out in their library. So I come to you today because residents in your community have reached out to our organization wanting us to donate these engaging bibles to have for all of your public school libraries. Our donations are free for schools, and we are asking that they be made available for students to check out. Last year, the school board at a local school district helped us to get bibles into all of their schools. We also have provided documents for you all to see regarding the legalities of having the Bible on library shelves, as that is a common question that we get. We have seen the positive impact of having bibles on library shelves for students to check out, and we know that it would be a positive impact in your school district as well. Students in your community, they want to read and check out the Bible. We just need to make it available for them to check out. And we want to provide engaging bibles for all the school libraries in your district. Thank you, and we look forward to hearing from you soon.
Thank you. So this evening, our hour is late. Our focus is on our students. Erin Lynn, if you would, enlighten us with what's going on with you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Since we canceled our February meeting of the Superintendent Student Advisory Group of Education due to numerous scheduling conflicts, we will begin to discuss the student dress code and the cell phone policy at our meeting next week. There are five of our students who serve on the school division Student Rights and Responsibilities Advisory Committee, and we plan to share the thoughts of stage students, oh, we plan to share the thoughts of stage students at the committee's next meeting to help with updating the Student Rights and Responsibilities Handbook that will come before the school board in this spring. Since we are approaching the time to begin the process of selecting a new student representative to the school board, I plan to share my experiences with the group at our March meeting and encourage students to apply and run for the position in May. In closing, I would like to wish my fellow students a very happy and safe spring break with their families and friends. Thank you.
And with that, on behalf of the board, I too wish our students a very happy and safe spring break. Thank you.